Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Troy Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. We have six of our trustees present, and Dr. Philip Hart is out of town in DC, actually in an enriching program talking to foreign ambassadors. So she's very excited about her chance to do that. And we have Assistant Superintendent Chris Greifwar here, sitting in for Rich Macheski, because Dr. Macheski is in Washington DC lobbying for funding for special education for our kids. So we've got a good team up here, and we're ready to start our meeting. We always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand and join me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I see Yara's down there. Hi. I didn't see you before, okay? All right. So we always begin our meetings with recognition, and we're going to start with the, we're going to rearrange the order a little bit here because we have one of our people who's stuck in traffic trying to get over here. So we're going to begin with Thomas Butcher and Student Spotlight. There he is, hi. Wow, that's some good cheering to begin with.
Well, thank you, Board of Education. With me here tonight are two incredible students whose talent and professionalism is something I greatly admire. Sophia Kyle is a senior at Athens High School, who has starred in many productions with the Athens Theatre Company. Her dream is to one day move to New York and become an actress. Sonia Purry is a senior at Troy High School, who with many commitments is a leader of the Troy High Film Club. She will be attending DePaul University to pursue her dream of becoming a filmmaker and actor, a filmmaker. We must be here to talk about a film. Wrong. These two are the hosts and producers for the Troy School District's very own Dream Job Podcast. It's all right there in the title. A podcast where Troy students talk about what they are doing right now in our schools to prepare themselves to one day accomplish their dreams. This is a show where students are encouraging each other to aim high, where they are showing younger students that yes, this is possible, and where they're showing us that every opportunity we aim to provide to them as students does have an impact. I could go on, but these two will do a much better job at presenting this to you over the next few moments than I will, which is why now I would like to make an announcement. I am a fraud. I have produced hundreds of podcasts, and I think they're decent, but these two sat down, recorded their first episode, and I was blown away. And I'm not the only one who thinks that, because that very first episode went on to become a top-three award-winning high school podcast at the state level by the Michigan Association of Broadcasters. Please. Right out of the gate, top three in the state. Sophia, Sonia, you have incredible talent and personality behind the microphone and also in real life. I appreciate you both so much. You are an absolute joy. And just like everyone else on the podcast, I know that you will one day have the jobs and the life that you dream of.
I want to be... an actress.
Scandal! Scandal in Troy, Michigan! Oh my god!
And now, the Dream Job Podcast with Sophia Kyle and Sonia Purry.
Hi! We are back, back, back.
Welcome, May the Jasty!
Thank you for having me.
It was a study that was searching the size of your stomach and how, how much you eat and how it influences the way you take radiation treatment, and how effective it is for treating pancreatic cancer.
Wow.
That's hilarious.
Your mom's an oncologist.
Yes.
Tell me about that connection that you have.
Her story is that like, when she was younger, her aunt, her dad's brother, was diagnosed with cancer and passed away very young. That kind of motivated her to pursue medicine. Cancer has like, been something in my family, like both my grandparents have cancer, and so I'm not confining it to the only thing I do with my like, exposure into the field of medicine, but it's does something, it is something that has a very strong draw on me.
Yeah, I mean, there's a personal impact.
For the afterward.
What do you do on your lazy days? What's your ideal lazy day?
Wake up and go to the gym. That's the first thing.
Oh my god! I have a lazy day? That's on my like, productive day.
And after that, I'll come home and just sit in bed and watch TV.
Congratulations to Anurag, who we have on our podcast today.
Yay, guys. Writing actual music for actual instruments, it's a completely different thing than, you know, virtual instruments, because when you hear that human element of it, you're, it puts you in the moment.
It changes the game.
Changes the game, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. It like, really just like, dive into the actual song, I feel like. That's when it like, brings a life, like, you know?
Yeah, it's like so raw and organic, and that's like, when I first heard that, I was, I was just like, my mind was blown. And Mr. Nutting could see that. He turned around and looked at me, he was like, "How does this feel?" I was like, I was like, "This, this is like, nothing like how I've heard it back at home."
Grace Cufanha, aka Grunkus Cufunkus, senior at Athens High School, one of the coolest people I personally know. Then in middle school, you know, you get the film class, right? So every, up until eighth grade, I was like, "I'm so excited for this film class," because it was the daily news. And so, eighth grade, we made the Grace and Hannah Show. And it has, to this day, I will be at Athens walking around, and some freshman will come up to me and be like, "Are you Grace from the Grace and Hannah Show?" I'm like, "Yes." Local celebrity. No, like, it was, it was crazy. I've been given all these opportunities, and now I'm like, "I'm not just going to take the camera and go out and film something. I have to know what I'm going to film." Because now I have all this stuff, this high-tech stuff that's going to pinpoint, make it perfect, so I have to be perfect. My writing has to be perfect. Having all this stuff just handed to me, and then having me be the one to be distributed, I guess you could say, has just really solidified the ideal of, this is what I could do, and I would love to do it, because it's so much fun.
Never know what's going to happen on the Dream Job Podcast.
You never do.
This has been the Dream Job Podcast with Sophia Kyle and Sonia Purry.
Do we have certificates or anything?
I do want to say, when they went to that conference in Lansing to receive that top three in the state award, I was still, again, blown away by how fearless they were to actually walk up to other people who work in the industry and make those connections, because that's another thing that's really going to make the difference as you pursue your dreams, so keep that in mind. I do want to open for any potential questions or comments, but I did want to give them an opportunity to say a few words if they wanted to.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Yeah, talking's a thing. There you go.
Well, I just wanted to say an obvious thank you to Mr. Butcher, who has orchestrated all of this. And I have a lot of friends who are Athens alumni, who are just as, you know, creative and have that, you know, drive to do those things in life. And every single one that I've talked to about the Creative Guild is like, "I wish I had that when I was there." So props to Mr. Butcher, who is starting this, and it's going to go on for years, gives so many students different opportunities to express themselves in creative ways. And I know Sonia agrees with me when I say, "Thank you so much for all the opportunities you've given us, and it's truly an amazing experience, and I can't wait to see what the future holds."
I just am kind of blown away and feel really lucky to live in a place and be in a district that there are so many ambitious, cool, talented students that this podcast is even, was an idea to have. And every time when I go into filming an episode, I am just really intimidated, honestly, by my peers, and I think that's a really healthy thing to have. That's just a great thing to, to have as a creative person, to be surrounded by so many driven people. Like, every time, you know, I record with Sophia, like, I'm just like, inspired by her. You know what I mean? And so, and then to talk with Mr. Butcher and, you know, have him weigh in on our decisions and just show me how equipment works, and just little things like that are, is something that I'm so grateful for and hope that I stay very cognizant of how lucky I am for that. So, you know, just, I just want to thank the district and those who've supported us along the way, and, you know, can't wait to come back in some years when we're hopefully successful. So, yeah, hopefully the job market is, we're crossing our fingers there. But, yeah, thank you, guys. It means a lot.
How do you pick the people who are on your podcast, who are your guests?
Yeah, honestly, as soon as I heard that this is what, you know, Mr. Butcher had in mind for us, so many names came to me. And, and there are so many people we could interview, and we're unfortunately probably not going to even have the time to interview everybody that we want to. And I just think it is, really comes down to like, the kids in this district are just so like, talented and driven.
For sure. And at least for me, I know, I like to surround myself with people who are as equally as passionate and creative as, you know, both of us. So having people on the podcast who are just as passionate, all that's doing is spreading that passion to us and making us passionate about the things that we want to do and the things that they're doing. So I know that I've always just, like Sonia said, right when we were given this opportunity, lightbulb, so many people in this district, so many people at Athens, so many people at Troy High came to mind. So narrowing it down was a little hard, but, but yeah.
The list keeps growing. Like, I'll hear even someone else doing something, I'm like, "Oh my god."
We got to have them on the podcast.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, looks like you connect very well together. How did you connect with each other, being in two different schools, two different circles, I assume?
So we specifically, we, I, it was through Creative Guild, and for our first meeting, we're both, like Mr. Butcher was saying, pretty outgoing. Like, when we went to Lansing for, to accept our award, we were connecting with so many different people. So when we were at our first, like, big Creative Guild meeting, we just instantly were like, talking to each other, like hitting it off, blah, blah. And when we were given the opportunity to put down what we were interested in doing for the Creative Guild, both of us were very adamant about having a podcast, and we were talking about it, and, you know, Mr. Butcher knows that we're very talkative people and was like, you know, it's definitely just going to mesh well together. And now I'm glad to say I have a great podcast partner and very good friend, so.
That's awesome.
Yes.
My second question is, obviously you guys are very outgoing, like you said, and are able to speak, and there are probably middle school, elementary school kids who want to get into these kind of things, but they are a little nervous, timid, not sure what to do. What kind of advice do you give to them?
Honestly, I used to be a really shy kid. I can't exactly tell you what switch flipped in my brain when we talked. I just think that one day I realized that no one's going to hand you anything, and now, if you speak up about what you're passionate about, people will remember that, and they'll come to you with those opportunities. And at that point, it's up to you to take that opportunity and really put everything you have into it. And I'd say that's my biggest advice, is something I've learned, like even this year, is just talk about what you're passionate about, because immediately other people will start talking about, talking about what they're passionate about, and you can just connect so easily. Like, I started talking about how my love of film and writing and stuff, and then all of a sudden, Phia's rehearsing with me on a short film, and I'm learning from her because she has so much acting experience, and, you know, I'm helping film other things, and just, just make your love of whatever it is known to the people around you.
Wonderful. Great answer.
Sonia and Sophia, on behalf of our administration, thank you so much for sharing your passion, and Thomas Butcher, thank you so much for providing this space for our students.
No, for real, can we get a round of applause? We're people over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Do you see Jonathan yet?
Yep.
Oh, he's here, okay.
We'll move to item D, though, if that's good.
Okay, sure. Let's go to, we're going to move to item D.
All right. So next, for recognition, we have this evening, four of our buildings and our staff members that we are recognizing for our work with State School of Character. So this evening, we'd like to honor Leonard Elementary School and Athens High School for receiving the State School of Character Award, along with Martell Elementary and Troy High for being named Emerging Schools of Character. Athens High School actually earned the State School of Character designation during the height of the pandemic in 2021, but we didn't get a chance to honor them because we weren't meeting in person at that time. Leonard was one of only 73 schools across the nation to be awarded this honor this year, with both Martell and Troy High being recognized in 2023 as Emerging Schools of Character as well. Character.org certifies schools and districts that have developed and implemented an intentional, proactive, and comprehensive approach that embeds character into all aspects of school life. The journey to becoming a school of character is comprehensive and involves each school showing how they embed key characteristics into their everyday work. This framework includes creating a caring school community where everyone feels they belong, providing students with opportunities to practice and reflect on their character strengths, and engaging families and communities as partners in the school's character initiative. Congratulations to all four schools. We are very proud of the time, effort, and dedication you have put into making Leonard, Athens, and Martell, and Troy High the kind of learning environments where students feel they're included, encouraged, and nurtured to succeed. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Lori Soper from the, as the Director of Schools of Character, to present our schools with the award. Thanks for being here tonight, Lori.
Thank you very much. You did everything. I do want to, I do want to just commend the Troy schools. In a former life, I was a Board of Education, past president and trustee over at an neighboring district, and I feel like I know your schools better at this point. I was here to recognize Larson when they got their state certification, and I was here when Laddles and West Elementary got theirs as well. You should know that you currently have 12 schools in your district that have received recognition from Character.org. You have five current national schools of character, so state is the first level, and then national is the highest distinction bestowed by Character.org. You have two current state schools of character, and five current emerging schools of character. So I am pleased to be here this evening to help you recognize Martell, Troy High School, Troy Athens, and Leonard Elementary. Is anyone here from Martell?
At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Michelle Barish and any staff members from Martell, so Martell is our first.
The 11 Principles Framework has informed our school's culture improvement process by being the guidepost for the culture improvement work we are doing. One never arrives at a character journey. It is an evolving process that continually revises based on the best practices of effective schools and the needs of the entire community. And I wanted to point out that at Martell Elementary, you do team huddles, which is part of your, pardon me, you said, in your school, and they are monthly multi-grade character learning groups that students stay in during their entire time at Martell. Congratulations to Martell.
One more award, Michelle.
And now, I would like, is anyone here from Troy High School?
Troy, Mr. Dan House, assistant principal.
I'd like to be in person. Hopefully the beginning of a, of a long journey. I'm thrilled to meet Dan in person, we've exchanged a lot of emails. So I just want to commend Troy High School on being a 2023 Emerging School of Character, but holds core values of resiliency, responsibility, empathy, and kindness. And I was so blown away by the fact that your character committee has 20 people on it, and it's made up of staff, administrators, and students, and is the driving force behind your character work. You said this passionate committee meets once a month to work on next steps for character work at the school, to educate staff and student body, to set up media events about your initiative. So congratulations, Howard.
And next, I'd like to recognize Troy Athens. This is for you guys. Like I said, I know you're, I know, I've known Jessica for a really long time. You've been at this for, for a really long time, and I'm very pleased that you've been named, you were named a State School of Character in 2021, and you are now on the national journey. You're in the National Review this year, and you're anxiously awaiting the national announcement on May 24th. Troy Athens, school core values, be thoughtful, act with integrity, and make an impact. Were selected as intentional action statements that are embedded into all aspects of school life. Embedding character is a natural fit with the school's instructional and SEL practices, which include NPDL, collective efficacy, cultures of thinking, and the Troy School District's four pillars. The school identifies ethical character building as a component of school improvement goals. Staff see themselves as ethical role models and use a variety of character growth practices to individualize the character effort in their classrooms. While Charity Week is nationally recognized, I want to highlight a practice in which I was just, I, I just was so, it just warmed my heart so much, and I know the evaluators as well. But staff members at Troy Athens write personalized notes to each and every one of their students twice a year. This is truly a unique practice in a high school, but particularly in a school as large as Athens. Troy Athens, as I said, is continuing its character journey in the National Review this year, and the national announcement will be made on the 24th, so congratulations. For all of you. Leonard Elementary also received recognition as a 2023 State School of Character, and they also are continuing on their quest to become a national school of character. They're in the National Review this year. Principal Dr. Erin Detmer said the Leonard leopards with the Leonard stars logo, which are our stars to represent all of the school's stakeholders. And she said, "We welcome everyone and embrace them as stars. All means all. District is the district and school mantra, and their core values are kindness, responsibility, integrity, respect, and perseverance." And one highlight I'd like to share about Leonard is they are proud to have brought Family Circles, a multi-age learning environment, to all the elementary schools in the Troy District. Leonard believes that family stands for people caring for one another, and circle represents strength, connectedness, and unity. Therefore, Family Circle is the heart of everything. Congratulations to Leonard. I just want, I just want to end with, I just want to end with thanking the Board of Education. I'm happy to answer any questions you can have as well. And I also wanted to mention that in 2021, during the height of the pandemic, Bemis and Troy Union received their National School of Character designation, so you guys are just doing awesome job. Much appreciated.
Lori, on behalf of the district, thank you so much for being with us this evening.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, so now we're going to go back to A.
Yes. All right.
This is a fun one.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have much to celebrate at Baker Middle School. We will begin with the recognition of seventh grader Aryan Kendhar, who won the Oakland Schools Scripps Regional Spelling Bee on Saturday, March 4th, at Oakland University. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Jonathan Cross, the principal from Baker Middle School, up to introduce Aryan and his parents, and tell us more about this achievement. Mr. Cross.
Members of the board, Aryan's members, it is with pleasure that I stand before you to present Aryan, and I want to tell you a little bit about Aryan's journey and my experiences with Aryan. Aryan is a seventh grade student at Baker, and he comes to us from Barnard Elementary. He is an exemplary student and a talented musician. He plays the bass clarinet in our band, and he is a self-taught keyboard player. Aryan enjoys math, loves to read and write, and it should be no surprise to any of you in this room, he has a passion for words. I had a chance to get to know Aryan and his family early in his tenure at Baker Middle School. During his sixth grade year, he and his family expressed an interest in us bringing back the Spelling Bee to Baker. Prior to the pandemic, Baker participated in the Spelling Bee, but along with several of our practices, the Spelling Bee was let go and had not returned. Aryan and his family came forward and requested that we bring it back, and it became abundantly, abundantly clear that Aryan was very passionate about the Spelling Bee. Initially, I thought this request was from a place of just wanting to participate at the school level, but I quickly learned that Aryan was competitive and placed in the regional Spelling Bee in his previous fifth grade year. At the time, he was actively training and wanted to win the regional bee. He set this goal for himself. And upon learning this, I knew I had to bring back the Spelling Bee and worked with his family and Ms. Lucci Sassi to make this available during his sixth grade year. Per the Scripps Spelling Bee rules, if our school did not enroll and host a Spelling Bee, Aryan would not have had the opportunity to continue this journey and compete and return to the regional competition. So I shared Aryan's story with Ms. Sassi, and I'm so glad that she said yes to sponsoring the Spelling Bee. Last year, Aryan won the Spelling Bee at Baker as a sixth grader and went on to regionals to compete. He performed well at regionals, but came short of winning the regional competition. Aryan exemplifies persistence. When he sets his goal on something, he doesn't stop until he does it. He continued to train, came back to us this year, won the school's Spelling Bee, and achieved his short-term goal of winning the regional competition. He relished the moment. It clicked, thank you. He relished the moment and shared with me that his work is not done. He has his sights set on winning the national Spelling Bee. I've had a chance to speak with Aryan candidly about his passion I've had a chance to speak with Aryan candidly about his passion for the Spelling Bee and the things that inspire him. He shared with me that he has been fascinated with words since the age of two. His mother fed his passion by helping him start his journey in competitive spelling. At five years old, Aryan started competing in the North-South Foundation. He's been pursuing winning the national Spelling Bee for several years, and he has until the eighth grade to accomplish his goal of winning it. He will age out of competing at that time. So regardless of whatever happens next, I am proud of his accomplishment and honored to be his principal. And I find Aryan's journey inspiring. When I asked Aryan what he's most excited about and looking forward to on his trip to DC, I thought I would hear the normal things, you know? See the White House, the monuments, or some of these traditional things that you hear from middle school students. Not Aryan. Instead, he told me that he can't wait to meet the students who are competing at the highest level, or, as he calls them, the spelling big shots. He can't wait to hear their strategies, their approach, and preparation to competition. He also said he's looking forward to the plot twist. Because the Simmons Cross is always plot twist. There are times that someone may place first or second in the regional bee but be knocked out of the competition early, getting tripped up on a word. He's looking forward to learn from this experience, and if he doesn't win the whole thing this year, he will use what he learned in his pursuit for next year. We'll be watching him as a Baker family, and I'm sure one Troy community, and it is my honor to present to all of you, Aryan Kendhar, Baker Middle School student, in Scripps Regional Spelling Bee.
We're coming.
While we're coming, do you have any spelling tips for us?
So you should always be calm. Every single time when you're spelling, you don't want to get too nerve-wracked. Then when you get too nerve-wracked, you might like mispronounce the word or say a wrong letter that you didn't mean to say. There are many Scripps National Spelling Bee memes, as they call it, where they say the wrong letter or something like that. I've heard many spellers say, for example, there was a speller who spelled a word, and then he said the wrong letter, and then he's like, oh, no, and then he started saying A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z. My second tip is to always just drink water, take deep breaths. Deep breaths will help you.
I bring Aryan out right before every staff meeting.
And you should also be exposed to a lot of words. You should not always be stuck to, oh, so I have a passion on maybe cooking, so just stick on cooking words. No, you should go explore more words. And for the Spelling Bee, you have to read the whole dictionary. So you have to like go from A to Z, and I have the dictionary at home. So I kind of flip pages and then write down whatever words I find interesting. And then from those words, you have to find language patterns. Language patterns really help you in spelling bees. So, yeah.
Mr. Cross, thank you so much for being with us.
I was going to say, don't go anywhere.
There's more to come at Baker. Over the last six years, our middle school English Language Arts team has been dedicated to improving reading and writing opportunities for students. Through partnerships with Teachers College at Columbia University and deep commitment to their professional practice, we have watched our classrooms flourish and our students continue to grow as readers and writers. At the heart of this work are our middle school teachers who have taken on new challenges, implemented a new curriculum, embraced the workshop model, and formed partnerships within and across our schools. This evening, we are here to recognize one of our amazing classroom teachers. I am joined again by Mr. Jonathan Cross, who will share with us the outstanding opportunities provided to our students in Mrs. Lucci Sasai's classroom. Mr. Cross, I'll turn it back to you, and we will invite Ms. Sasai. Join us in the front.
This is somewhat a continuation of the last one. But I'll start with a little bit of background about Ms. Sasai. Ms. Sasai is a Language Arts teacher at Baker Middle School. She's been a Baker Bobcat for 12 years now, and she started with us as a tutor, a translator, a summer school teacher, and an adult ed supervisor. Lucci started teaching Language Arts VI approximately 10 years ago, and I've had the pleasure of watching her grow and go above and beyond in her duties, consistently showing dedication to her department, to her students, and her passion for education. Three years ago, I approached Lucci and asked her to become the Language Arts Department Chair. We were well into our journey of implementing the Teachers College Reading and Writing Workshop. I spent plenty enough time in her classroom, and I knew that she would help us move this work forward. Lucci has embraced the workshop model, has been instrumental in supporting this work throughout our Language Arts Department. I've had a chance to see firsthand the impact that workshop has had on our students. I understand that one size fits all does not match the realities that we see in our classroom. We have a variety of different learners, and I've seen our students thrive under the workshop model, from being given individualized feedback during their conferencing, from being given choice opportunities, which has really sparked their curiosity and passion in increasing their volume in reading and writing. Our students have an opportunity to engage as a community of learners, where they are supported in small group work and confering, with multiple opportunities for personalized instruction, which is so important in our goal for our pillars and for our world-class education. I see this on a daily basis, but you don't have to take my word from it. You should take it from a national news artist. They came to Baker to interview Aryan, and I was challenged that day. It was a one-day notification that we need to find a place for them to record. And I went into our media center because I felt that this would be the most appropriate setting, and probably the newest space at Baker, wanted to show that off a little bit. And of course, we were doing Teachers College Workshop training at that time, so I could not really move that. And so I had to find a place to do the recording. And being that this was a Language Arts-specific training, I looked at the teachers on the list, walked right into Ms. Sasai's room, and wasn't even really thinking about the connection and her role with Aryan, but I figured this is a good representation of what's happening in our building. And Paula Tutman, the newscaster who came to Baker, she's been in plenty of schools in southeast Michigan. She's seen all of them. And me kind of being desensitized to working in Troy, I didn't think much of my choice in the room. And so to have her walk into the classroom and forget that she was there to teach or to interview Aryan, she's looking at all of the anchor charts, and she's looking at all of the ideas on the wall. And she turned to me and asked, "Whose classroom is this? I want to meet this teacher." I said, "Well, you can't." She's in training right now. But we did get Lucci to meet with her, and she was just so blown away by the work that's happening in our building. She had to regroup and then get back to her interview with Aryan. Following day, it felt like Groundhog's Day because I received a call from Kerry Burnham again, who said that Paula wanted to do a feature specifically talking about all the amazing work that's happening in our Language Arts Department and on the opportunities that we're giving to our students. And the reality is that Ms. Sasai is a wonderful teacher. She does a great job. I mean, her experience speaks for itself from being an interpreter, a tutor, adult ed. I mean, she really has the ability to work with all learners at pretty much any level. But the truth is that I picked any one of our available classrooms, and it really was a representation of our system-ness, of our investment, and how when we expect our students to have a certain experience in our Language Arts program, they're seeing it any room that it happens to come into. I get a lot of requests for individual teachers, but I let power schools pretty much drive the selection process of where those students go. And I feel reassured knowing they're going to get high-quality, effective instruction in our classrooms. And so this is recognizing Lucci, but I also feel like we're recognizing your investment, recognizing our Language Arts Department, recognizing our Department of Teaching and Learning, recognizing our Assistant Superintendent's, because we all work together to make this happen, and Lucci gets to experience that thrill every day with our students. So it's my honor to present to you, Ms. Lucci Sasai.
Mr. Cross, thank you for that wonderful representation of our work here in the district. And I want to say to Aryan and Lucci, thank you so much for the work that happens each and every day. But Aryan, I'd like, as Assistant Superintendent for Elementary, I'd like to say everything you learned was as a Barnard Blue Jay. Thanks again, Mr. Cross, for being here.
Congratulations again. You know, I saw the Paula Tutman interview, and it was, she was blown away in the room. She just could not keep herself focused because she kept looking around at the amazing work going on there. So I'm really happy we're able to honor you tonight. Okay. All right, so that puts us to, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess here, and that's for folks who are here for the recognition. If you want to move on and enjoy the rest of your evening, that's fine. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's fine, too. We'll give you a break to sneak out of here if you want at this point. So we'll reconvene in about five minutes. Okay, we're going to get back underway, please. Folks, I need it quiet in here so we can get our meeting underway. Thank you. We move to, next on the agenda is additions and deletions.
We have none.
We have none, thank you. Then we have public communication on agenda items. I don't believe we have any on agenda items, okay? And there, that moves us to our general consent agenda. This consists of the minutes of the February 7th, 2023 Board of Education Workshop, minutes of the February 14th, 2023 Board of Education meeting, the treasures report from January of 2023, a furniture pilot purchase, and adult ed laptop purchase. So may I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, and E on the consent agenda.
Thank you. A resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hopt. Did I say that right? Are there any comments or questions on this? Okay, seeing done, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, that moves us to personnel. I believe we have none, no items under personnel. Then that takes us to curriculum. So I believe we have Ms. Dee Palato, the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Instruction, is going to provide us an update on the Fielding Middle School design work. So exciting work. Hello again.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Education. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you an update on our middle school design process. So this is a conversation that we were able to have in more length at our workshop study sessions. But for the purpose of the public, I believe it's incredibly important and exciting to be able to share progress that we've been making since the bond passed in November. One of the first projects that we have as a school district is the design and build of a New Smith Middle School. And so we have worked in partnership with Fielding International to begin our learning as an organization about what a world-class middle school would look like as we move forward. Fielding International is an international design and architecture group that focuses specifically on education and designing schools. And we felt that as a district, it would be important for our folks to learn about what schools look like around the world and what innovative thinkers are doing when they think about schooling. And so we've engaged in a process really to begin to analyze what our learning ecosystem might be. So really kind of fancy words to think about what happens inside of a school in order to really engage our students in the best teaching and learning that we can provide. We came together with a group of teachers, students, building leaders, and district staff representing all four middle schools. So one of the things that we were deeply engaged and committed to in this process was ensuring that our conversation about middle school design wasn't limited to just Smith Middle School. We know that in our bond, we also have the opportunity to renovate the insides of Bolin Middle School and Larson Middle School, and that Baker, our newest build actually in the district, has a lot of opportunity to be flexible and can adapt to some different learning environments. And so we put together a team of about 60 folks, including mostly teachers and students, to examine what it might look like to build a new middle school. Our approach was very student-centered, and you'll see throughout a variety of these pictures. Our students were incredible leaders. Their voice really rang true throughout, answering questions and talking about what they were hoping to see in a school of their future. The process really started in Phase 1 with discovery. So Fielding International came with a team of three different folks, and they visited all four of our middle schools. They walked through, and they observed what we were using in our schools and what might be underutilized. We have some beautiful media centers. How are we using those? So this is, they captured this picture as one snippet in time, and we didn't have a class in that media center, but as Mr. Cross said earlier, we know they are often very busy. And we had conversations with students and with teachers about what's working and what's not working. Some of the things that came up were, if you're a student and you're looking for a breakout space, all that's available to you is the hallway. So we have kiddos sitting, you know, on the ground in the hallway, collaborating with each other, and how that might not be ideal. Our students really talked about what not only they hope for in space, but also in programming. So here's three of our students presenting specifically on school being engaging and fun, and what that means to them, and what could change in order to make school more engaging and more fun. Throughout this process, we've talked and learned a lot about 21st century learners. We reflected on how our future is changing. We know that many of the buildings that we currently live in were designed 70 and 80 years ago, when thoughts were different about school. And so long corridors with classrooms off of them are not necessarily the most innovative spaces to encourage creativity and risk-taking. Our students summarized during that discovery process their learning, and they built out what they had hoped for, and you can see on this slide, they talked about having choice. So our high school students really benefit from a lot of choice in our course description books. Our middle school courses are not as exciting, some of our students might say. And so we heard from them, we want choice in our classes. We want the ability to have flexibility. You know, two things that really came up often were recess and naps. Those are things that we learned a lot.
Important things, okay.
Important things. So then we engaged in Phase 2. So Fielding went back, they brought everything together in Phase 1, and they said to us, in Phase 2, we're really going to start visioning.
Can you hold her up? There's a lot of talking in the room. It's really hard for me to hear her, so if we could not talk while her speaker is speaking? Okay, go ahead, Christine, I'm sorry.
So we talked about visioning and really thinking forward, and these seven areas became kind of the mission of a reimagined middle school experience. So when you look at these seven here, I think it's hard to argue with what we hope our students, while they're there and while they're learning, we hope that they're able to engage authentically. We want them to be able to be culturally competent. We want them to promote social connections with each other. We want them to be empathetic with those future-ready learning skills. And you can, I won't read them all to you, you can see them listed there, but these were the ideas that we leaned into when we were thinking about the new vision of the school. And again, our students came together and created, not just our students, which we highlighted here, but the teams came together and they created what they believed were embodiments of these different mission statements. We spent time learning about different architectural sketches, different patterns that exist in buildings throughout the world when we think about education. And these rose to the top as the top 15 design patterns. So design patterns are important, and we're really important in the work that we've been engaged in, because as those of you know who may have been in engaged in, because as those of you know who may have been in Larson Middle School and been in Smith Middle School, they're very different shapes. So they won't all look the same, but the ideas can permeate those different buildings. Those design patterns can emerge. So if you look at this screen that's here, the top design patterns specifically that you can see, the first one is learning communities, and it's formatted funny up here, so the words are cut off, but learning communities, driving a lot of what we're doing. The conversation was about how do we bring our students together and our teachers together in proximity so they can learn and find those natural interdisciplinary connections, but also how do they build family? How do they build community when they're there? We know that students who feel safe and feel seen in school are able to learn better. We know that. And so how do we create those spaces where our students feel very much a part of the community? Our students connected to, and our staff connected to, this idea of transparency. Right now, in many of our buildings, we have cinder block walls surrounding a classroom. So when you send a student out into the hallway, you can't see where they're going. You don't know how to monitor that space. So our students and our teachers talked about how nice it would be to have transparency, to be able to see out into the hallway, to be able to see into the outdoors. And you can see as you kind of look through there, a large amount of the feedback was having variability, variability in seating, and variability in space. So it doesn't all need to look the same and feel the same. Let us have choice when we walk into a classroom on what we sit on or where we sit. Let us figure out what it feels like to be able to come together in a small learning environment and then push out into a larger opportunity.
Could you go back to that slide just one more time, please? And one thing we talked about in the workshop, and it's probably worth you mentioning, is that these are not mutually exclusive.
Right.
That these are all elements that can build together to create the environment.
Yes. The top five that rose, the five that rose to the top in that group, we did a kind of a voting and a priorities experience, was the learning community, the transparency, creating a learning commons in the center of the community where people can kind of spill out of their classroom and work together collaboratively, variable seating, and then that connection to the outdoors. So through these next couple slides, I'm not going to talk through them, but it's important for me to just flip through them, because I think it's really important for our community to know that we are learning in partnership with those who are leaders in design on what our schools should look like. When we talk about a learning community, there's intentionality behind it. There's thoughtfulness on how you put the classrooms together and how you place teachers to be able to collaborate with each other. The teacher collaboration room is an opportunity to be able to build a space to promote that professionalism and that teamwork that we know is needed to be able to bring a group of students along.
Ms. Di Palato?
Yes.
For the sake of the audience, could you elaborate a little bit what a learning community means?
Sure.
Just that tiny bit.
So a learning community, as it's situated up here, and this is just one example of what it might look like, is a grouping of classrooms together around a common space. So a learning community could be a variety of different sizes. So the newest middle school in Oakland County is West Bloomfield Middle School. West Bloomfield Middle School was designed in learning communities. They have about nine classrooms that surround a commons in the center, and those classrooms house the four core, and then some of the electives that don't require specialty spaces. So English, math, social studies, science, and then some of the specialty elective classes like world language would fall into a learning community. Our special education resource rooms would fall into our learning communities. But specialized spaces like a STEAM center would probably be a standalone, close to the learning community, but not built right into it. And typically, a learning community is designed with a group of teachers and then a group of students who are served by those teachers.
So it helps make a big space smaller kind of?
That's right, yep.
So if you have 400 kids, if your learning community is only 90 kids, now the 90 kids are bonding together with the same set of teachers, is that what you're trying to do?
Correct. So a learning community does allow for that relationship to be built. And in Troy, our typical size of a middle school is about 750 students. And so when we think about our learning community sizes, they would probably be somewhere around 125 students and two for each grade level. And I think it's important to note that not everything happens in a learning community. It's very important that our students aren't isolated from each other throughout the day, but that they also have an opportunity to build deep relationships. So it's important that we work to find the balance of what that looks like. So a student might spend four of their six periods in their learning community with their core teachers, but then push out for band, or art, or STEM, or gym. Any of those sorts of things are where you're kind of cross-pollinating with the rest of the student body.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What we ended this learning on was an opportunity for all of the teams who are at work to create and build from their learnings. We had five full days of learning that were sprinkled throughout this winter. These team boards were created, and they were created with the opportunity for teams to build the best of their favorites, right? This is what I would do if I could do anything. These two that are existing right here that you see are the two that came from our all student groups. And they really focus on, and one of the key things that we heard was, you know, really, we'd like to see natural light. We'd like to know what's happening throughout the day. Is it raining? Is it sunny? We know that that's also something that we've heard a lot from at Athens. We just haven't had the opportunity to talk to Athens yet. So they're going to be up next in our design cycle here. But we've also had our students talk about the structures of their day and having access to quieter spaces. So not all of our students want to be out and loud all day long. Some of them want some of those quieter spaces, or individual spaces, where they can go with a, you know, maybe two or three other colleagues, peers, and sit down and work through a project, and be able to do that right outside of their classroom with their teacher's guidance right there. So this process has provided us with a lot of critical feedback that we are now able to use as we start to build out the design of Smith Middle School. And so we are in those iterative stages right now, deeply involved with the Smith staff to be able to find out what they need. We've had what's called user group meetings, where our architects are there, meeting with each content area teacher, to be able to talk about what do they need to serve their students the best, and that will also help inform these pieces. This is a really general sketch of what a learning community might look like. This is not anything specific, but it shows all of the things that might be included in a learning community. So a learning studio is a classroom, right? That's what a classroom would be represented as. A science lab might actually be what we're now calling an active lab, because it could be used also as a project room. So if I'm teaching language arts and we are going to make puppets for Romeo and Juliet, I might need the active lab, because I need big spaces and a sink to be able to do that work. So I'm sharing that space with my teacher colleagues. You'll see the teacher workshop on there, as well as our additional support classes that we have sprinkled throughout. So the goal is to be able to really create an ecosystem where students are able to thrive in that time that they're there with their teachers. So as we move forward as a district, our middle school strategy for design will be focused on that learning community, knowing that it will look different in iterations in different places, but that it will hold the concept of how do we make a larger school feel small for our students, and create an opportunity to build those deep relationships and ensure that all students feel that they belong.
So you might end up having three of these in our middle school?
We are anywhere between three and six, so depending on the size of the learning community. Yep.
Are there any other questions that people have? I know we explored this extensively in the workshop, but are there any other? I just had two, well, one was a comment, one was a question, but Fielding, tell us about Fielding. Why did you choose Fielding to work with? And what's their, what do they bring to the table for us as a district?
Sure. So I think that's a great question. So Fielding International, we spent some time looking at how we could grow our own thinking and learning. So Fielding is an international design, architectural design group, and they focus only on schools. So schools around the world. And their thinking really has been pushing educators around the globe to think about, how do we move from what they call cells and bells, those long hallways with cells off of them, into creating a more, more human system, where people's needs are met, rather than feeling so institutional. And so they were able to bring forward not only their thinking around design and architecture, but deep levels of professional learning. And so they are committed to not only showing us cool pictures, but talking about the programmatic changes that need to happen in our schools in order to be able to teach in spaces like that. So how do we lead and teach? We had an opportunity to visit just yesterday, the Smith staff had an opportunity, seven teachers, to visit with Bloomfield Hills High School, which was built and opened in 2014. And the teachers in Bloomfield Hills High School talked about the learning community system that they have, and they talked about their ninth graders, and they said, a big part of ninth grade, as ni- three teachers, is teaching our students how to work independently and live and interact in a space that is so open, to elevate our levels of expectation for them, of their behavior, of their ability to perform. And it was a really great give-and-take conversation about their own professional learning and journey that was scaffolded through Fielding and the one that we are just emerging on, so.
Okay, good. And then the other, I wanted to go back to, because in the workshops, I think we need to give our kids kudos for their work, because our Fielding partner kept saying, the kids blew the adults away over and over again. And it's, when you look at those diagrams up close that you had there, and I know we're kind of jumping through for time, but if you look at the concepts that are there, these students understand the environment that they want to be in every day. And they're, and we joked about, you know, we want naps and recess, but there's a lot of really good ideas in here that we should be paying attention to, and I'm really excited that we're bringing them along for the ride and letting them, you know, actually help us design the space that their successors, I guess, will, they'll be gone by the time it's done, but what better person to help us understand what a middle schooler needs than our middle schoolers? And the, a lot of the things that you're showing here, it's, you know, we're in the middle of doing our interviews across the, the board is doing interviews across our campus for our Portrait of Graduate work. So we've, in the last week and a half, we've talked to over 250 kids in nine, nine different buildings. And I see these things here, and it's like the themes that we have heard with our fourth, fifth, we've been in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Seventh, and eighth, and ninth, and eleventh, twelfth.
And eleventh, twelfth, but if I, but if I, yeah, started with preschool. But if I look at specifically the comments that we're hearing out of our fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade discussions, the concepts are right here. Like, without showing them this or talking to them about that, when you say, how do you want to learn? What's important to you? What stands out in your mind in terms of excellent learning? A lot of, there's wonderful parallels between what we heard without, you know, a script and what you're showing us here in terms of what your target is. So I'm really encouraged that we're on the right track here. So that's a very long-winded comment, but I just wanted to kind of share that with you as I look at it, because we, yeah, we didn't have the benefit of those interviews when we had the workshop two weeks ago. So it's since then now, we've been, you know, in those classrooms, listening to lots of kids talk, so. Very cool.
And I think we, I, we really appreciate, and I know that working closely with our administrative team at the middle school and the high school, we have a commitment to elevating student voice. And at the board level, I know that that has been something that you've also been committed to, and pushing us to really ask the question, not do we know the answer, but what do our kids think?
Yeah.
And I think elevating that voice, our students don't have to think about what they need, they know what they need. And they were very confident in telling us that as we were working through this process.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, that's, I think you're just going to stay there, though, right?
Yeah.
It's the Christine Show. Okay, so we move to 7B, which is our early middle, early middle college partnership.
Yes. Thank you. So I'm excited to be here tonight to talk a little bit about an early middle college partnership with Lawrence Technical University. We have had a lengthy conversation in the district about finding a partnership that's right, to be able to continue our learning at the early middle college level. And Bill Turner, who was our Director of Career Tech Ed, he was instrumental in moving this partnership forward, and we had an opportunity to speak a little bit about this at the last workshop that we were together for. So I'm going to go ahead and read this consideration. "The Troy School District seeks to provide broad, rich, and robust course offerings that inspire our intellectually challenging and open more opportunities to future learning. The objective of the early middle college is to offer students entering grade nine a five-year program that combines high school coursework with the first two years of college. This would culminate in the attainment of a high school diploma and at least one of five early middle college on-track graduate outcomes at no cost to students or parents. The early middle college will be located at Lawrence Technological University and utilize the resources of both Lawrence Tech and Troy School District for students admitted to the early middle college."
Okay, thank you. So we're being asked to consider the development of an early middle college partnership with Lawrence Tech University. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Anay?
Be therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education approves the proposed early middle college partnership with Lawrence Tech University, with program elements to be developed beginning of 2023-2024 school year.
Support.
Thank you. I have a resolution by Ms. Anay, supported by Ms. Alish. I'm sorry, I, these, our names are so similar now that I have to say them quickly. Okay, so we're all set there, so are there any comments or questions about this? And I know you weren't able to be at the workshop, so maybe you have some?
I sent Ms. Di Palato a long list of questions this afternoon that she anxiously answered, which I'm appreciative of. But one, in reading this, do kids only, like, if they don't commit to it by grade nine, are they lost of the opportunity, or can they?
It's a great question. We have an onboarding, we will have an onboarding structure. And so I think what's important, you know, to note, and I did share this with the board, is we are in the early development stages of this. And so there's a pretty scripted structure that currently exists with Lawrence Technical University and the other schools that they partner with. So we're able to adopt what they have and then adapt it over time to best fit our needs. So my direct answer is there will be onroads for students at different grade levels.
Because I just feel like some kids won't know that they want that.
When they're a freshman.
So they, students who join after ninth grade may not be able to attain the full associate's degree and 60 credits, but they may have other opportunities, including certification of different ways.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Other questions?
No, just for the public, there will be some kind of script, as in like one class in ninth grade that is outside the curriculum, two classes in 10th grade, and so on.
Yep, there'll be a whole program that will be marketed out to students so that students can see what that looks like. And it actually begins with a summer course at Lawrence Technical University before students go into ninth, before students go into 10th grade.
10th grade.
And then they have the opportunity to grow along. And then the fifth year, actually, so students go through the fourth year, they're able to graduate with their cohort from their high school, and then they stay on for a fifth year. They take one class at the high school level, so underneath our support and supervision. And that class has to be a mathematics course or a math-related course, based on the state of Michigan requirements. And then the remaining courses are all offered through Lawrence Technical University. Yep.
And students from which high school buildings will be eligible to do this?
All students will be eligible to do this. Our International Academy students likely will not participate because they have a pre-scripted curriculum that takes up their entire schedule, but our students at Troy College and Career High School, Athens High School, and Troy High School will be eligible.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to elementary math. That actually shifts. Hey, it's you.
Hi, it's Natalie and I. And Julia.
Hi there, Board of Education.
Hello.
I'm welcomed tonight by our math curriculum instruction specialist, Julia Alder. So tonight, as you know, we are recommending Bridges Curriculum for Elementary Mathematics along with Number Corner. This journey of reviewing our elementary math programming started pre-COVID. It seemed like a drawn-out process, but I just wanted to publicly thank Julia and also our math specialists, as well as our elementary teaching staff, for keeping, keeping it going. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, last year, we had quite a few teachers dabbling with curriculum, but when we opened it up to everybody this year and said, who wants to try out Bridges? We had 95 teachers join in that. So we have 95 teachers this year who have piloted, who have early adopted Bridges for this entire school year. So just so you know, as a board, I know you've been on this journey with us, but early adopters is such an important part of our process, inviting kind of those people who are passionate about trying something new into try things at first, and really, it just really helps to inform how we support our teachers once we take that thing to scale. So that's been such an important part of our process. And we also have been, throughout, collaborating with our math leadership team, which is a representational group of teachers, teachers from all departments, principals, our math specialists.
ELD teachers.
Yes, ELD teachers. Yep. So this recommendation represents a move forward, aligning with the most current thinking in the field of mathematics when we think about teaching and learning. You, as a board, have had several opportunities to observe Bridges teaching. I'm smiling because it's hard to not smile when you see the joy and the thinking alive in our classrooms. So you've had an opportunity to see that several times. We know, as a teaching and learning team, that our big work is supporting the teachers We know, as a teaching and learning team, that our big work is supporting the teachers next year as we make this change. And so that is already underway, thinking with our math leadership team has already met and started to kind of identify what will some of the key pieces be to support our staff next year. And then also working with our principal team, because obviously their leadership at the building level with anything, anything new is important. We also will include a lot of learning for parents. This feels different than probably the traditional math curriculum we've had in elementary in the past. You know, homework will feel different. So we are planning several learning opportunities where parents will have an opportunity to kind of witness the way math teaching and learning has changed since they went to school. And then also just share some tips for how they can support their children as well. So we are super excited about what's ahead. And so we are moving this forward for your consideration.
Okay, all right, great. So we're being asked to adopt our new elementary math materials. May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Wilson?
Be it therefore resolved that the above-mentioned recommended mathematics material for the elementary level be approved for the 23-24 school year.
Support.
I have a resolution by Dr. Wilson, supportive of Ms. Anay. Any questions or comments on this adoption? Go ahead.
So I just want to, just want to repeat, so this at the elementary level, you said this year was, was piloted by 90 teachers. Okay. And then, and I do want to say that we, as a board, did have an opportunity, quite a bit, a lot goes into reviewing curriculum, so not, not only at, you know, at the, at the school level, but we, as a board, did have an opportunity to go and to observe. You know, and for myself, I have to say, I was quite impressed, especially about what's being done at the kindergarten level. I think we're going to have some very competent and fierce kids.
Mathematicians.
Mathematicians coming up. So I just, you know, I, I just want to reiterate that it's, it's, it's a pretty robust process to review a new curriculum like this at the elementary level or at all levels.
Yeah, good.
More a comment, I also had an opportunity, and yes, I was blown away by the excitement the kids had for doing math. Who wanted to be so excited? So, which is really great. Two questions, two comments for the audience's sake. What is our main reasoning behind wanting to go to this curriculum is one, and two, maybe one or two main changes that the parents or kids will see?
Good questions. To answer them, and the first thing, the biggest change will be experiences that students have in a community kind of feel in mathematics at the elementary school around numeracy in terms of being fluent in ways where there's multiple approaches to solving some things that might seem, seem basic at one point, but students are able to more in-depth share how they see numbers, how they relate with numbers in ways where there are so many different levels of sophistication that happen all in the same couple of minutes, frankly. And all of those ideas and approaches are honored in the classroom, the way that's set up. It's, it's an additional routine that's focused on fluency that wasn't really part of our regular mathematical textbook that would have been for the elementary level. And we had by chance fluency being developed in the past for some, but not something specifically targeted in the instruction for all. And that is a made, that is the plus of what kids see that's different and the plus for why we really were looking for additional curriculum to enhance the experiences that some of our kids had, but not all of our kids. So there's additional, an additional routine that's in addition to, not like something taken away, that's a benefit of this resource.
So they're spending more time on math on a regular day at an elementary school?
Yeah, and it might be just slightly divided differently, but their time is, is, is increased, yes.
One thing I would add too is, I think what we're experiencing, as some of our students are sharing, that this kind of new way feels hard. And the reason for that is, so one of the ways the teaching has shifted is it's not about going right to the procedure in mathematics, it's really about learning it, learning the mathematics conceptually and then moving to procedure. And so some things we've heard are, you know, maybe not wanting to persevere at first. So it lends itself to children learning how to persevere with problems that are really difficult, instead of viewing mathematics as something that you kind of speed through and that there's one way to solve everything. So it's really about building those problem solvers that will persevere when there's a challenging problem.
Good. Are there questions or comments? Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for the time that goes into these program reviews. I know that sometimes it feels like stuff is happening fast, but I know that it's so thought out and time-consuming. And so, I mean, I remember when you were like, read mathematics for human flourishing. You know, it's just this idea that, that it's something that you're looking at it from a whole child perspective and, and just, I'm so grateful that you make these decisions thoughtfully over time with a lot of input from experts and that you're not just randomly like pulling a curriculum out of a, out of a hat. And it, I will echo that it's just amazing to hear kids talk about mathematics and have a vocabulary to talk about mathematics. And so I'm just really excited to see as these kids progress, how it's gonna blow their higher-level teachers out of the water with the way that they can talk about what they're doing, learning, and thinking. And it's just so exciting to see these elementary kids inspire the older, older siblings and older kids in the district with, with their vocabulary and their learning. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to kind of build on what you were saying, but it's impressive to me whenever we start looking at the reviews, the amount of work that goes into it and how that work cascades down. So from teaching and learning to the individual teachers who step up that first year and say, okay, I'll try it, right? And I think about the, how that changes their lesson planning. And then as you expand the work of the principals in terms of trying to spread that gospel, right, to the rest of the teachers. And Nicole, and I'm not sure if anyone else was two years ago that we, where we saw the math corner the first time, were you with us when we saw? So the three of us saw one of the very early pilots over at Costello, and again, our minds were blown. And then so this year, to go back and then, so that was, I think that was a first grade class, and then this year, we saw kindergarten and third grade. And I'll tell you that the kindergarten lesson blew everybody's mind, everybody walked out. But, but, and it was really because the, the level of understanding that the, the students had around what they were looking at, there was no memorization, they were able to explain the why. They, and, and that, to me, is something that, you know, as somebody who went through advanced mathematics, and, and I'm like, yeah, I can do it, but tell, why don't you tell the public, what was one of your, your goals that I kept making fun of you about? It was the joy, what is it? Yeah, and I kept saying joy and math. I don't, I don't get that. And then we walked into the classrooms and I said, these kids are joyous over the math. Like it's, it, they're excited and they're eager to share and they, and they, they want to learn this. And that's different than anything I've ever seen in a classroom before. The, the third grade lesson on fractions was probably the best fractions lesson I've ever seen in my life. And I, when I, when the kids were breaking off two by two using the, the hexagons for the, for the game, as they were, I would ask them, well, why is that? I was watching them make these translations from one six, two six, two six is one-third, you know, three six is one-half, and, and building those fractions physically in front of them. The, the speed of the numeracy was just phenomenal to me. So it was very exciting. It was very exciting to watch that. But I, but I, I recognize that there were, there's years of work behind getting to that point. And Julia, I know that that's been your life and your night and day for, so thank you for that as well.
This, I hope, will be a legacy.
Yes, I know, that's right. But at the end of the day, you got the curmudgeon to say, yeah, it's joyous, all right. So, so, you know, so you succeeded in that. And I, I mean, I was sending Natalie emails going, joy, come on, joy, come on. So, so at the, when we got there in the day, and I said it, it was there. It's just a lot of good work. So we're very, very excited about this implementation. And we've been talking as a board that this really is, this has to drive changes in our higher grades because as these kids, particularly if we've got kids starting in this, at a kindergarten level, where are they going to be, what are they going to be ready for by the time they hit middle school? And we have to make sure that we're prepared to move them in and to keep that joy going and make sure that we don't kill that joy when we hit middle school. So this is, this is really exciting stuff. Pardon me?
May I add?
Yes, oh, yeah. I suppose. Well, are the assistant superintendent for elementary, go ahead.
I just want to compliment Natalie and Julia for your leadership. As you mentioned, joy and mathematics don't typically go together, but one thing you mentioned, we had 95 teachers kind of put their name in the hat to be early adopters. I think one thing that the teaching and learning team, again, led by both of you in this case, does better than anyone else is, is you can count on us to learn in partnership with others. And I know that you're working with ideas always to improve a child's experience. And so just from a very simple point of view, in that way, I just can't thank you enough for generating that enthusiasm through our principals and being able to just really lead this really very heavy lift. The rigor will improve and our students' experience is just overwhelming. So thanks to both of you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we're done gushing, can we get a vote? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Resolution passes. Congratulations, you two. Wow, an applause for a math adoption. That's amazing. Okay. I'm amazed we have, we have no business.
Where's the Rick West show?
Yeah, where's the Rick West show? Oh, it was under consent. Okay, there's always a Rick West show. Okay, then that moves us to public communication and non-agenda items. We have a lot of speakers tonight, so I would like to move my student reps up before that. So if they want to leave and get some sleep or do some homework, I'll give you a chance to do that. So let's go ahead and jump through. Yara, why don't we start us off? What's going on at IA East?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Things are going great at International Academy East as always. I'd like to begin by talking about our Glocella Spring Formal Dance that was held on March 4th. The theme was glow in the dark, and students had tons of fun with the photovue DJ, light of glasses, and more. Our March Reading Month competition has been initiated. The IA Literature Team is coordinating a competition where the winning houses will gain ice cream social and individual prizes will be awarded to reading leaders or people who read the most books.
Yeah, please be closer to the mic.
Of course. For each book read throughout the month of March, students can take a picture of themselves with their book and keep their eye on the bulletin board and the comments to see the leading house. The IA East Drama Club presented their second play of the year called Twelve Angry Jurors. It was originally written for men only, initially called Twelve Angry Men, in a time before women were unable to serve jury duty, but has been modernized by the Drama Club and the administration of student director Ruthie Kanakam. At our monthly house seminar, we had IA alumni come in and speak to the students about what IA and the IB program has done for them in their college and professional life. They shared words of encouragement and advice on how to make the most of your high school time, in which the students found to be very impactful. Our forensics team had their third tournament of the season this month at Avondale High School, where several students placed at finals and two students even won first place in their category. The Science Olympia team also had a great run at their regional competition this month. Twenty-eight IA East students competed, and twenty-eight students came home with a medal or ribbon in nearly all 23 events. We're so proud of the hard work of all our Science Olympia students this year, and we'd like to congratulate three students who got an invitation to the state competition at MSU. The seniors have completed their language orals just this past week. These are 15-minute-long, one-on-one conversations with their classroom teacher in either Spanish or French, in which those conversations are scored and reported to the IB as part of receiving the final IB diploma. Last week, we also had our senior honors night, where students recognized for their honors memberships, academic successes, scholarships, and department awards. Our Indian dance team, IA East Junoon, headed off to Northville High School this past Friday to compete in the annual Desi Tushan Competition. We are so proud of their tremendous efforts and cannot wait to see them compete again in other competitions this year. Lastly, today, we had our boys' powder puff volleyball game at Baker Middle School, where the seniors took the win and remained undefeated.
As it should be, right?
It was a busy month, and we are excited to head off to spring break next week.
All right, great. Thank you, Yara. Does anybody have any questions for Yara? Okay, all right, we'll move. Thank you. We'll move to Sarah. Hi.
Hi, hello, everyone. Athens has been doing great since the last board meeting. Last time I was here, I spoke about the events that took place at Athens in light of Charity Week. We are proud to reveal that we raised over $115,000 in only one week for the charity Carols Angels and Warriors. We thank all of those who contributed and to everyone who made this possible. We had a variety of students who won an array of awards in the last month for Model UN. Some of these awards include honorable mention, best delegate, superior delegate, outstanding delegate, and the Cisro Award. Our theater company is getting ready for a new show called You Can't Take It With You. There are seven, or there are three showtimes, April 14th at eight o'clock, April 15th at three o'clock, and April 16th at three o'clock. Come support the Athens Theater Company with this comedic play. We had a poster contest the past two weeks to celebrate the Battle of the Books for March's Reading Month. We had a variety of beautiful decorations that brighten up our school. We also participated in Drop Everything and Read, which is an incentive to have students read during their classes. This was appreciated by all teachers and students. Athens MSA participated in Miss the last couple of weeks, winning first place in soccer, fourth in basketball, and third in bowling. We congratulate all those who placed and thank you for continuing to make us proud. The Social Justice Project is gathering auditions for their annual ethnic fair. These auditions are due Friday through email. You can get more information through their Instagram account. The fair is set up to occur on April 20th, and we are incredibly excited to see a variety of different cultures on stage and hopefully we have many participants. We would like to remind our students of a few dates that are coming up. Dates and times have been released for the senior all-night party, prom, and graduation, so please make sure to register before the deadlines. The senior all-night party registration is due on May, or March 25th. Thank you all and enjoy your spring break.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions? What's going on at Athens? All right, very good. Okay, Nish, what's going on at Troy High?
All right, can everyone hear me well?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So this past month at March has been a very busy month for Troy High with both events and many awards to recognize. So the first thing that we kicked off with was on March 12th, we had a free luncheon with tickets to the musical for many senior citizens that are in the Troy community. So we had over 60 senior citizens attend, which is obviously a great turnout and a very fun event for our Troy High student government. We also had our school musical curtains kick off with their student matinee last week Wednesday, which is a great show to watch. And they wrapped, I think they finally wrapped up their shows this past weekend with a Friday and Saturday show at Troy High. At the end of April, we are planning on hosting a senior citizen prom and a Bring Your Child to Work Day for our Troy High staff. We are also collaborating with many social workers to help celebrate sort of the behind-the-scenes members at Troy High, including our school bus drivers and secretaries in the coming month, to kind of help honor them and recognize their efforts. And finally, Stugel is also planning to, working on planning sort of a mental health week in May to help bring light to that issue and really help us, help our students at Troy High. So moving on from our events, we also have many awards to recognize for this month. Our first being our Troy High Forensics Team is on a roll, placing second and third in their competitions this past month, both in Grand Rapids and at Avondale High School. Our Troy High DECA chapter, for those of you that don't know, DECA is a business club. So our DECA chapter had an outstanding performance at states, having 67 state finalists and taking 40 members to the International Conference in Orlando, which is a school record high in the past eight years that we've run DECA. And our winter sports are coming to a close, as well as our spring seasons are starting up for all our spring sports, with tryouts being the past week and this current week right now. And finally, a fun event that kind of wrapped up our month was the Unified Basketball Game that was played at Little Caesars Arena against Northville, which was a really fun experience both for the coaches and the kids in that team. That's everything at Troy High.
Great. Any questions for Nish?
Nish, I have one quick question. Do you happen to know if a senior citizen wants to attend the prom, what they do?
I don't know what they, what exactly that entails, but I do know that they're sort of planning to have a small, fun event for them in the, either the gym or the cafeteria for these senior citizens. But the exact details of the event are still being worked out as it is coming up in, I believe, towards the end of April. So they're still working that out, but I know there's the plan to put that in the works.
Very cool.
Good. Any other questions? I have one. Nish, there's a rumor. Who, who was elected president of the state DECA organization about a week ago?
That would be me.
Yes, that's right. Woo! President, Nish. So we've got, so now you have campaign promises you have to keep, right, for next year? I saw a list of, so I'm going to keep coming back to you, say, "How you doing on the campaign promises as we go?" But congratulations. Couldn't let you go without congratulating on that. Okay, and Alexi was not able to come tonight, but I do want to at least call people's attention to a couple of things going on over at TCCHS. One is there is a career fair going on right now, and I stopped over there before our meeting, and there were, I don't know what our attendance is because I had to run out as soon as it was starting, but the number of booths was pretty impressive. Twenty-eight different booths with organizations, businesses, training programs, with opportunities for our students right after high school graduation. So on behalf of the board, I thanked everybody for coming in, but they were all excited to be there. And the other thing is, I think she did mention coming up the Arts Beats and Treats Arts Program and Music Program, and I think they have a date in early May set. So I said, be sure and let us know once that date is locked down, so that we can maybe make an appearance and see. So it sounds like they're really excited about that program and putting it together at TCCHS.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Actually, that's the reason I was late. I was over there. We had hundreds of families and members turn out from Troy College Career High School, but also from Athens, Troy High, and IA.
All right, fantastic. When I was walking through, I'm like, I hope they come. I said, all you need is an audience now.
I was blown away.
Wonderful. Oh, that's great. Okay.
What kind of?
Already shared, okay. Old news, old news.
What kind of career roots were there? Just an idea.
It was everything from, there were apprenticeships, there were careers in tech, there were careers in...
You know what? I have the list right here. I'll just send it right down to her. There we go.
The Troy Police were there.
Yeah, Troy Police were there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So folks, if you want to stay for all the public comment, you can. If you want to take off and take a breather for the rest, look at them go. They can't get out of here fast enough. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. The meeting's already gone for a while here. Do we want to take a quick break before, or do we want to plow through? How do people feel? Are we good to go? Or do you want a break? Okay, let's do like a two-minute break, and then we'll... Yeah. So we will take about two minutes, and then we'll be back and run through this. Okay. Okay, we're going to begin. Let me give you a couple, just sort of overall rules of the road for public address to the Board of Education. The first thing I want to remind the folks here tonight is that this is a meeting taking place in public. It is not a public meeting. What does that mean? That means that we have a meeting going on that you're watching, and part of that meeting is an opportunity for the public to weigh in, but you're not part of this meeting. So all that really means in this is that we're not going to have a dialogue with each person who comes up. This is an opportunity for each person to come to the mic and offer us your comments. We will log your comments. If there's something that we need to specifically respond to, that will take place afterwards if we feel there's a need to do that. We have a lot of people who filled this out. We have, our guidelines for our meetings is that we allow an hour for public comment. Based on the number of sheets that we have here, that's going to allow one minute for each person. So come to the board. Dr. Wilson will let you know when you have about fifteen seconds left, she'll just hold up the sign, and we'll just keep it flowing, so we can hear each person's comments. Pardon me? And then, so when you come up, we'd just like, if you could state your name, indicate whether you're a resident of Troy and whether you have a student in the district. Those are kind of the three things we'd like to know. And then dive in. So I'd ask a couple of things. One is if we can not have, whenever we have a number of people, we'll have jeering or cheering either way. Can you just, let's just have everyone come to the mic. We'll go through, capture everything. That's the goal of this, to be polite to each other, be polite to everyone. And we'll get through this, and we'll be able to track as many of you as we can. The other thing I want to make sure that everybody is aware of is that this is not the only way that you can address the board. You know, we have our email addresses, so if you want to extend your comments beyond the time you have here, you're absolutely welcome to send them. We read anything that people send to us. So there are other opportunities to extend your opinion as well. Sound like a plan? Are we, everybody okay? All right, so I'll just call them out, and we'll get through this as quickly as we can. My first person is Ms. Justine Parakis. Did I forget somebody?
No. Hi.
Hi there.
My name is Justine Parakis. I am a resident of Troy, and I'm a student at Troy High School. I'm a junior. So I'm here today to ask you guys, the board, to kind of slow down and include all aspects of one Troy when making this decision regarding the removal of honors classes. Our school district is made up of many people with all different learning abilities, and that's one of the reasons that we take pride in our wide variety of courses offered. We're not a one-size-fits-all model, and that's why it's important that we offer classes that fit all sorts of learning methods. Additionally, class differentiation only works when teachers are well-prepared and know what they're doing. If we're just now starting to pilot classes and using these late start days now to train teachers, how is it possible that all teachers in the district will be prepared for this change come September? Why not wait a year and see how my class and the class of 2024's Pilot AP Lane class results come back and see whether improvements were really made? I encourage you as a board to ask for more data. How can we make such drastic changes?
Thank you. Mrs., I have Mrs... Mrs... I'm trying to read the writing. Bargavi Kakosani?
Bargavi.
Barkary Kakosani? K-A-K-O-S-A-N-E?
Yes.
Or S-A-N-I, I'm sorry? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't prepare. I was waiting for my husband, so...
Okay. All right. Mr. John Rollinger?
Would you like to speak?
You can speak, if you'd like to come up and speak.
Yeah.
It's okay. You don't have to be scripted. Just come talk to us. Yeah, or you can pass. It's fine. Yeah. Okay.
So I'm a Troy resident, and my daughter is into the middle school, in the ball and school. So before, I just wanted to ask the board that I would like, you know, just review the curriculum. I don't know why you wanted to take off the honors programs. As you know, we already back off the English last for five years, because my son went to the honors in English, and for my daughter, I didn't see that. And now I'm hearing that, you know, honors is taking off. I don't know what makes you decide that. I would like to review that with every Troy parent. Please consider that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. John Rollinger? Mr. John Rollinger?
Hello, I'm John Rollinger. I'm a Troy resident and proud parent of a first and fifth grader at Leonard Elementary. I'm an engineer that knows the value of advanced math, and the proud product of public education has allowed me to excel at that math. I was very appalled at the recent flyer that came home with my fifth-grade daughter that announced the removal of middle school accelerated math courses in favor of testing up to the next grade level. This is not the same. Accelerated math allows for those with the aptitude to learn faster, where skipping a grade requires students to be self-taught on the entire next-grade content. The change was also very late for studying for this test out, and that is just not fair to those to do it. I really implore this school district to reconsider the change and reinstate middle school accelerated math, at least for the next year, if not for whatever time is required to study it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Natalie Gandhi? Please, we have a lot of people to go through. Natalie Gandhi?
My name is Natalie Gandhi. I'm a Troy resident, and I have two kids as a student in TST. I'm here today to express my concerns about removal of honors classes in the TST curriculum. By eliminating honors classes, TST is trying to achieve equal outcome for everyone, a one-size-fits-all approach which does not work. This new approach will demotivate kids who want to work hard and put extra emphasis on the subjects. On the other hand, it will hurt students who do not necessarily want to focus on academics. They may want to pursue arts or sports, and by putting them into leveled-up classes, we may be losing talent in non-academic area by shifting their focus away from their talent. Rather than completely taking away honors class, we need to develop a bridge program, a program to fill gaps between honors and non-honors, so more students can enroll into honors program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nirvani Angadi? Hello.
Good evening. My name is Shivani Angadi, and I'm a sophomore at Troy High. Taking out honors classes forces students into one classroom, which destroys the purpose of making sure that each and every student is given the attention and support they need to grow. After talking to numerous of my teachers, who have taught in this district for over a decade, one of the reasons why honors classes were added in the first place were because having all regular classes burnt out teachers who struggled to ensure that every student can strive and give them the ability to learn at their own pace. We have students and the Board of Education, but it's the teachers who make the biggest impact on education for each and every student. Only the teachers know and can truly see what works and doesn't work in a classroom. Aside from teachers, students want the ability to focus on the subjects they have that they're passionate about through honors courses, and the ability to take regular classes for subjects they struggle with and need to learn at a slower pace. Let's not break a system that works, rather, let's improve and build off of it. Thank you.
Mr. George Parakis? George, I saw you come in. George? There you are. Yeah. Next up is Vicky Mu, just so you can be on deck. Hi, George.
Hi. Hello, my name is George, and I'm a senior at Troy High School. I've been a member of this district for thirteen years, and I would like to express my frustration with the de-leveling of English, math, and science courses in this district without proper input and data. First off, the level of transparency on this issue is extremely disappointing. When it came to the bond, the district wanted everyone's input. But when it comes to this, they do not care what we have to say. This decision has been made without the input of students, parents, and even most teachers. People have been blindsided by this news. It is not enough to include these changes at the very bottom of a weekly email with the heading "ELA Program Review." We must implement a proper decision-making process to ensure that this is really the right decision for us, where everyone gets a voice. Today, I encourage the board to start asking questions. Why has a district not been transparent with these changes? Where is the data on this issue? And why is proper input not being collected?
Time up.
Thanks, George. Again, Vicky Mu?
It wasn't a full minute.
Vicky Mu?
Yes, it was. I'm sitting here with a timer.
Hi, Vicky. And then up behind Vicky is going to be Ray Zhang. Hi, Vicky.
Hello, my name is Vicky Mu. I'm a senior at Troy High School, and I'm also here to talk about the removal of honors classes. As someone who has gone through the honors track in the Troy School District, I realize that not everyone has the same goals and learning styles that I do. With such a drastic difference in a student's current and future career aspirations, getting rid of honor classes would be a step back in accommodating the diverse needs of our population. Regarding math classes, even though the content that's being taught in classrooms won't change, from personal experience, there's much more to honors classes than just content. Holding students to these higher standards challenges them to develop analytical skills that will help them later on in higher-level math classes. With this plan, students are less prepared to take on these higher-level classes, which are a significant jump, even with honors classes that we have now. So based on this reasoning that I just provided, I ask that you reconsider your decision to remove honors classes from our course structure. Thank you to the board members for this opportunity to express my ideas.
Thank you. Ray Zhang, and he's followed by Yumen Cheng. So Ray is up first, and then Yumen after Ray. Hi, Ray.
Hi. Everyone, my name is Ray Zhang, and I'm currently a senior at Troy High School. Kids are different. Emerging honor classes with regular classes were inevitably make it so that kids are struggling to keep up, while others are challenged. From my own experience in AP European History, the students taking this class all have a genuine passion and love for history. On the other hand, Troy High also provides a regular world history class for students that want to learn a bit of history while focusing their time on other subjects. The same logic should apply for English classes. We shouldn't squeeze kids into a one-size-fits-all model. Instead, students should be given the choice to learn English to their own desired level. Moreover, honor classes are an incredibly important stepping stone for students looking to take AP classes. They provide the rigor and environment necessary for students to succeed. Taking away these opportunities strips away the ability for students to challenge themselves and impedes them from further education success. Therefore, all these should be considered before removing honor classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yumen Cheng? Hi, Yumen, followed by Heng Guan Li?
Hi, my name is Yumen Cheng. I'm a local resident, and I have two kids in the school district. And I'm here to talk about the same issue. And I strongly feel that the school district, I salute your hard work, by the way, and have been a great supporter of all your endeavors and voted for the two newest members as well. But I'm very concerned about the direction that school district is going with the removal of the honors classes, because I feel it's destroying the very inclusiveness and diversity of the school district. They used to be the greatest strength and attraction for many students. And so imagine if we remove the varsity sports team, you know, no sports talent will be able to thrive. So being inclusive and diverse means every kinds of talent should be allowed to grow and thrive. And by removing the honors classes academically, you know, gifted kids will be deprived of the opportunity to thrive in this school district,
which is very disheartening for many parents and residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heng Guan Li, followed by Anupan Sewal?
Heng Guan Li, Troy resident. I have two kids in Troy School District. Well, simple fact, seventy percent of US students coming to college are not prepared in mathematics and STEM fields. And if you think you are doing a good job in mathematics, we are doing a good job as a district? No, that's not true. And research has shown that watered-down standards does not work. And this is clear district service to equity issue, by the way. We know that, we know a lot of Asian girls and African-American boys who are really into deep mathematics skills, found only in honors classes, won't be found the right place in district. Troy is a city of immigrants. Many Asians, Indians, people of Middle Eastern, European immigrants, and children are first-generation immigrants, first-generation college students. It's in our culture's DNA to work hard, study deep in STEM fields, to level the field, compete with privileged class. Such, well, consolidation of honors math is definitely, is greatly diminishing such opportunities.
Your time's up.
Okay. And it's strongly time a month that we offer more honors classes.
Anupan Sewal, followed by Peggy... I guess we're done. No, hold on. Hold on. Okay, here they come up. Okay, Mr. Sewal, hold on, and then followed by Peggy Chenowski.
Hi, I'm Aukon Sule. I'm a resident of Troy, and I have students in the school district. Due to the limited time, I'll restrict my talk to five questions for the board. So the first is, you know, with honors, different children had a chance to learn at different levels, and this workshop-based curriculum, why can't it be delivered in a regular track and in an honors track? Why the need to eliminate honors to switch to this new curriculum? My second question is, the reason given was more kids will have access to AP classes. But we set the requirement that you have to finish honors to go into AP. Why not remove that requirement? Let any child who wants to go to honors move to honors, make AP accessible to more children. My third question is, middle school English was removed from honors. Show us the effect. Did that increase the number of children going into ninth honors English or AP? Fourth question is, now we are using test out, which is a single event, moving the owners of studying at home to the children. And finally...
You can email us your questions.
All right, I'll...
Yeah, email, yeah, that's, thank you. So Peggy Chenowski, followed by Jackie Purcell.
Hi, I'm Peggy Chenowski. I'm a mom of two TST grads and a Troy resident. I come to you because I have a unique perspective, as I'm a private professional math tutor who's worked with students in every middle school and high school across the district for over a decade. I have worked with students at all levels, special ed, regular, honors, AP. There's a commonality that comes with the students I work with who are honors and AP. They almost all have skipped a year of mathematics somewhere in their curriculum. They come back at usually Algebra II into pre-calc with huge holes. Those of you who might remember, Rational Equations, where people talk about fraction things in elementary, that's where it is in high school. That's what they don't have deep understanding for. Other concern is you're asking your teachers to stretch to teach size-of-your-large bands. What are you doing to create professional development opportunities for them to do that well? Usually, they're using honor students in these undifferentiated classes to help teach the class. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Purcell is up next. She is followed by Stella Callis.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm a Troy resident, and my name is Jackie Purcell, and I have two elementary school students, a fifth grader who is about to go into middle school. I have no idea what this is about, because nobody has given us any information. I just learned that Leonard got a piece of paper that told them what was going to happen next year. I have it at Hamilton, so I came here to find more information out. But then also, I'm concerned because I think this causes the squeaky wheel to get the most grease. So a lot of children, I feel in elementary school, that there are certain kids that need a lot of help, and they ended up getting more time than the kids that don't need help. And my children notice this. So, how is this going to prove in middle school? And how is this new curriculum, which my child is piloting, going to go into the middle school when we don't have any information about it? Thank you.
Can you hold on just for... Oh, you got to ask. Okay. Thank you. Now, let's see, was that Stella? Was that okay? I was like, I'm holding things in my hand here. Okay.
Yes, I'm a... My name is Stella Callis.
Hi, welcome.
A resident and a parent of two kids currently in school and one that graduated. I agree with everybody else that's been coming up here. I am very much for the honors curriculum. You make sure that we all heard about the bond proposal, but there was no transparency over the removal of honors programs. And what's next? Is AP classes next? And it went... And yeah, we needed to debate this. We needed to see how this was going to be successfully implemented. We're lucky to be in such an ambitious school district and I think we need to act like it. And I hope that you reconsider everything that you've been doing so far. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I have Ali Apahedian, followed by Rocky Rukowski. Sorry. So, Mr. Apahedian first. See here? There you are.
Good evening, Ali Apahedian, Troy resident, Troy parent. Troy parent. Parents are angry because once again this board and many administrators have betrayed the trust of parents in this community by secretly planning behind our backs to strip our students of learning opportunities without informing parents or being transparent with them. It's time to speak the truth and call out the discrimination of the equity policies that are destroying the quality of education in our district. The three, the two of you on this board up here with PhDs behind your name should be thankful that there was no woke Marxist superintendent or board member at your high school to cancel the honors classes that paved the way. To cancel the honors classes that paved the way for the success you're benefiting from today. The evil of equity has hijacked our classrooms and is harming everyone in this community. Our children's future is being sabotaged because it has become offensive to be a high-achiever and independent thinker. It's time to stop this insanity.
Rocky Rukowski, followed by... Followed by Shan Shan, I believe it's O-I-U. So, Rocky first.
My name is Rocky Rukowski, I'm a Troy resident with a daughter that goes to Bemis Elementary School. And I'm going to take my time and ask all those that are against eliminating the honors and potential AP to please stand up. This is just a microcosm of the community that is upset...
Thank you.
That is upset with this decision and with the lack of transparency. And I know I'm echoing what a lot of parents have been talking about and George and one other individual was mentioning. This is the email dated March 10th from Cary Birmingham in One Troy News that talked about the ELA program overview. You had to click a link to get the overview and even this doesn't tell the truth of an elimination. What it says in specific words, it says this course raises the bar for all students and levels up the curriculum. If you support diversity, equity, inclusion, prove it by not eliminating our honors courses.
Shan Shan Oui. Again, I may not be saying the last name right. The first name is S-H-A-N, S-H-A-N, last name is O-I-U. Thank you. Followed by Rahua Han is up next.
Hi, my name is Shan Shan Chu. I have a PhD in engineering. I'm very proud, I'm darn good at math. I think I'm very concerned to eliminating honors because I think it has negative impact on academic opportunities, motivation, equity, and quality preparation for high-achieving students. I think everyone has opportunity to work hard and excel. We should always strive to challenge students and encourage hard work. These bright, talented, ambitious kids are our future. We should be doing all that we can to endure their success. Thank you.
Thank you. Rahua Han, followed by Fabrice, and I never say his name right. Yeah, Fabrice, and you can say your name to me again. I apologize when you come up, but Ms. Han, hi.
I'm Rahua Han. I've been in Troy for 23 years. I have one student graduate from Troy and also one in Troy High right now. Okay? So, on February 7th, I came to the school board workshop and speak against removing honor courses. At that meeting, reading from your facial expression, because I look at everyone in your eyes, okay? And read your facial expression. I think all of you have agreed with me that not all of us can have doctoral degree, not all of us can become professional athletes. Then, how would you not agree that children should be taught at different level of intensity? So, one week later, watching all of you approving the removal of English IX honor unanimously was really unbelievable to me, okay? After that, I also talked to some of the teachers and they also shared their concerns. It would be very challenging for them to give assignments. It would be challenging for the students, okay? So, instead of dumb down with the standard.
Fabrice. Just a little longer. I never say... I'm sorry. Say your last name for me.
Fabrice Medauskas.
Chenowski, thank you.
I'm a Troy resident and a parent of a Bemis Elementary School student. And I want to say I disagree with most of the comments made here today. And I'm speaking from the perspective of a college professor at Wayne State University in economics and pharmacy. I want to applaud the district for making changes to middle school math particularly that I think will raise overall achievement and college readiness among our Troy students. Because the number one most important facilitator, allowing a student to complete a wide range of math and STEM courses in high school, is completing Algebra I by grade eight. That will still be allowed to be done, just as it was before. We're doing what excellent school districts known for their inclusive excellence, Ann Arbor, Ithaca, New York, are also doing by delaying the tracking until grade eight. And I just want to say, besides teachers, what's really important is the student's peer group. By allowing a bigger peer group, including all students, including the most ambitious and motivated kids, we're going to allow the half of the kids to sort of get more ambitious and develop an excellence and appreciation for math. Thank you.
Thank you, Fabrice. I have Basam Salem, followed by Tracy Owens. So, Basam Salem is up next.
My name is Basam Salem.
Hello.
I'm a Troy resident. I have two students at Ball and Park. They are both honors. I'm here to add my voice to keep the honor classes. Matter of fact, I think we need to increase them to prove... To provide more opportunities for higher-level classes for the students if they need it. Although it seems that the kids have... Future is very far away. In reality, that is approaching very, very, very quickly. As adults, we all know life is too short. And if the students can save a class or two, their college life will be very important. Therefore, having an honor class is even more important to prepare them to save time and their bright future. Removing our honor class is like telling a marathon runner to stop running too fast. And they can only go up to certain speed or telling the swimmer that you cannot swim too fast. Or a bodybuilder that you cannot lift a weight too heavy. Please keep honors classes.
Okay, thank you. Tracy Owens, please.
So, now we stop them?
Tracy Owens, followed by Matun Shablani.
Hi, Tracy Owens, three kids in the school district. Troy's school district is not much different from Seattle Public School District, highly ranked and demographically alike. In 2016, Seattle Public Schools removed gifted classes from elementary schools. In 2017, they voted to pilot a program to remove tracking in middle schools. By 2020, all middle schools' honors classes were removed. In 2021, they removed honors classes from the high schools. In 2022, they started slimming down AP course offerings and changed the grading scale to remove F grades. By 2023, Seattle Public Schools started laying off teachers and staff in our consolidating schools due to critical budget deficits because of their declining enrollment. Troy seems to be following the direction that Seattle Public Schools is going, but we are about two years behind them. This board has the opportunity to reverse course before we end up in the same situation as Seattle.
Matun Shablani, followed by Erin Prasad. So, first is Matun Shablani.
That's my husband. He's not here. I'm going to speak. My name is Desha and I'm a...
Hi, Desha.
My son is in Waddle's Elementary School. The rush to get rid of honor classes in the Troy is a misguided attempt at equity and it does more harm than good for our children. High-achieving students need honor classes that will challenge them, which a regular class setting is not able to do. Also, children with learning disabilities will be negatively impacted in many ways because the teachers... They will struggle to keep up with the high-performing peers. I think mental health issues will also increase and teachers will also have more work as they will need to adjust to the teaching style and methods. So... Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now Erin. And following Erin, I have Shilpa Patel.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, parents, and fellow community members. My name is Arya Prasad and I'm a senior at Troy High. I rise before you today to express my deep concern regarding the proposed removal of the honors curriculum. As a worried student, I believe that this decision lacks transparency and could have far-reaching consequences for the academic success of our future generations. The honors curriculum has long been a hallmark of our school system, offering students the opportunity to challenge themselves academically and push their limits. It has been an essential part of our educational journey and its removal is a cause for concern. However, what is even more troubling is the lack of transparency from the school board regarding this decision. As a student, I feel that we have not been given an adequate explanation of why the honors curriculum is being removed, nor have we been asked for our opinion and feedback on the matter. For many of us, the honors curriculum has been a source of pride and accomplishment and it has given us the chance to compete with our peers and challenge ourselves academically. This sudden removal of this program with minimal explanation is not only frustrating, but also feels like a betrayal of our hard work and dedication. The removal of the honors curriculum is not only an academic issue, but also a matter of transparency and accountability. As students, we deserve to know why such a valuable aspect of our education is being removed.
Thank you. Shilpa Patel, followed by Megan Kovacs. Shilpa, hi.
Hi. My name is Shilpa Patel and I'm a Troy resident. I have a daughter in the 10th grade at Athens High School. I am opposed to the change or removal of honors classes, not only on an academic level, but on a personal level. I feel honors classes promote kids to be accountable at a young age. It inhibits thinking outside the box, enhance research and independent skills at an early age. They learn how to be competitive and they learn how to become problem solvers at an early age as well. These are all skills which are not part of the academic curriculum but invaluable. We just ask for transparency before making a decision.
Thank you. Megan Kovacs, followed by Kaffarina Mandia. So, first Megan Kovacs. We won't. Hi.
I'm Megan. I have kids in the Troy School District. Taking away the option of providing opportunities for students to explore academic interests seem counterintuitive. Perhaps they're wondering if they have a true interest in math or English or if it's just an area they excite, but they don't really enjoy. Some like to read, write stories, do extra math. Others don't. My oldest actually asked me to put him in Saturday School when he was a kid. No joke. So, I would imagine the honor track's purpose is for those that enjoy pushing themselves academically in a way that may or may not be similar to their neighbor and provide an accelerated environment to do so. Your teachers are committed to their students, all of them. These kids you see here all have different interests. We're not living like in a world that's... Sorry, like from the book, The Giver, they don't have to be identical versions of each other. Taking away the option of advanced learning will more than likely lead to frustrated and bored students. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaffarina Mandia, followed by Krish Gupta. Hi.
Hello, good evening. I'm Kaffarina Mandia, a junior at Troy High School. Troy High School named one of the best schools in the nation once. Prides itself on having a successful curriculum with students flourishing under it. It has worked for so many years. So, what is the need for change right now? Removing these honors classes, these prerequisites to AP courses will place all students at a disadvantage in the future. Being a current AP student, I can vouch for the fact that it has really helped me... Honors courses have really helped me being a student currently. I am less stressed about it because I know the rigor that's expected from me. I'm fearful now for my brother who's in middle school, who might struggle to even reach his ambitions because he didn't have the stepping stone of honors classes. I want to keep my school as one of the best in the nation's and let's keep our curriculum to make sure that stays that way. Thank you.
Krish Gupta, followed by Nikki Snyder. So, first we have Krish Gupta, followed by Nikki Snyder. Hi, Krish.
Hello, everyone. My name is Krish Gupta and I'm a senior at Troy High here to talk about the removal of honors classes. Some people here have siblings, sons, or daughters that would experience this change. I have none of that. I have no stake in this issue. But I'm here today because Troy's honor classes have done so much for me and it is my wish the students that come after me to have the same opportunities that I did. One of the biggest things honors classes provided for me, and I'm sure for many other students, was a small half-step up into a more challenging curriculum. As some of our TSD parents have already mentioned, that small half-step is so crucial for so many of our students. Under the new system, students actually won't have the same access to that that I had. Guys, one of our biggest goals for our school is to provide instruction for every level of student, is it not? Putting everyone together and removing the choice of different tiers of learning is not doing that. Learning has to be personalized and no one should be forced to learn at the same pace as people way different than them. Tell me, when did we as a community become okay with removing the power of choice and personalization from our students? If there is a goal to boost our educational scores, that change should happen at the base level of our classes, not by removing our honors classes.
That's ridiculous. Thank you. Nikki Snyder, followed by Cynthia Lynn. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Snyder. I'm an elected member of the State Board of Education. I ran for and took an oath to the students of the state of Michigan in 2016. The goal of education is to help maximize each individual student's success to the best of their individual capabilities. That includes lobbying in DC for students with special needs and providing opportunities for students like honors classes. Voting to remove such an offering not only fails to close the achievement gap, but also goes against the state of Michigan's public education goals identified in our Top 10 and 10 Plan. I do not recommend removing honors coursework from what you offer for Troy students. This is failing children instead of helping them be their best. Board members, please look to your left to the wall here.
Fifteen seconds.
Is this what it looks like to offer a world-class education for all with a focus on deep learning? Is this what it looks like to set the standard for excellence in education? I would argue, no.
Ms. Snyder? No. I just wanted to see a Troy resident. No, she didn't. Ms. Snyder, are you a Troy resident?
I'm a member of the state board.
No, no. My question is, are you a Troy resident?
Dexter, Michigan.
Are you a Troy resident?
I'm not.
Okay, and do you have children in the Troy District?
I have children in the Dexter District.
Okay, not in the... Okay, that's fine. No, that's fine. I just... We ask each person to say that when they come up. Cynthia Lynn is next. Cynthia Lynn, followed by Bo Yang. Cynthia Lynn, followed by Bo Yang. Cynthia, are you here? Here she comes. She might need a boost. Hi there. I kind of see you. Hi.
My name is Cynthia Lynn. I'm a first grader at Bemis Elementary. And I'm here to fight for no changes. First of all, because of it lets advanced people learn more higher levels. And second of all, the teachers are stressed out. And third of all, the not advanced people will get probably used for the advanced people who are shouting out their answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Bo Yang, followed by Akshay Dutta.
Hi, my name is Bo Yang.
Hi.
I'm a Troy resident, I have two boys, one in 10th grade, one in 2nd grade. I'm very concerned about board's decision about removing the honor system or honor classes. My older one has been in honor classes for a long time, ever since middle school. So he has been benefited from this, this classes, and then he has been spared, inspired by the challenges he was given. And I'm sure he has making a lot of progress at every stage. I think everybody has a learning curve, including all of us. And I know, like, some of you have the doctor degree or PhD degree, and you probably have learned this, you have learned everything faster than other people.
Fifteen.
So, I really concerned about the decision to remove this honor class. I don't care about your fancy building in the next five or six years. I'm really concerned about the system, the education system. So please consider your decision.
Okay, thank you. Akshay Dutta, followed by Dale Murish. It's A-K-S-H-E-E-T, I believe, last name is D-U-T-T-A. Akshudutta. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Hello, my name is Akshay Dutta, I'm a senior in Troy High School. I'm here today to express my discontent over a new composition that would remove the system that's currently in place for more linear design, streamlined and straight. But my problem is why? If a student displays extraordinary mathematical or ELA skills, why should they be held back? And on the flip side, how can this possibly help someone who needs the extra guidance and support? The system will force both those that do need help and don't need help to be in the same class together. This not only makes the teacher's job harder to acquiesce, but it leaves both parties at a loss. In addition, I feel like the transparency of this issue has been kind of a problem. As I talked to my parents about this, and they have been in the district for 11 years, and they will be for 10 more years since my brother's in 1st grade, and they have no idea about this entire thing. And so I think, first of all, the transparency problem has to be solved. And from a point of view of a student who has been fortunate to take these opportunities of higher level math and English classes from world-class teachers, this proposal is the antithesis of what makes TSD great, and will lead to teacher, parent and student detestation if not addressed properly.
Okay, thank you. Dale Murish, followed by Dr. Sheng Gong Zhao.
Hi, I'm Dale Murish, Troy resident since 1988. I don't have any kids in the public school system because they're all college graduates. I'm a candidate for the Troy City Council this November. The proposal to end middle school honors classes will eventually hurt property values as the schools decline. More importantly, the students will suffer, not just honor students, but the honors who lose the slower pace that they're used to. It would make the teachers' job harder because they have to adjust their teaching to a wider range of abilities. For 5th and 6th grade, I went on a long bus ride across town in Highland, Indiana to attend a new elementary school with levels 1, 2 and 3 for each subject. I greatly benefited. In 6th grade, our English class shortened and simplified Hamlet, and I benefited from my class math too. Not sure how much that boosted my SAT scores later, but I did well on that test and got good grades in college. My junior high also let 8th graders take algebra, meaning high school students didn't have to take two math classes at the same time. Please return honors classes for U.S.A.
Thank you. Sheng Gong Zhao, followed by Ethan Wang. Good evening.
I'm Ethan Wang, I'm a current resident of Troy and have a daughter in the Troy School. And I'm also a teacher from Lawrence Tech University. And at our university, we create an honors program to improve our student retention. And the alumni through the program report that this program gave them a special opportunity. They've helped them build a feeling of belonging to a learning community, and they also helped them achieve higher. So instead of removing this program, I will highly recommend keep the program, keep the program, and at the same time, working hard to make it better. Instead of cutting it down, calling it a level off, no, it's leveling down, the program.
Thank you. Ethan Wang, followed by Helen Zhu. Ethan Wang? Ethan Wang? Yes, please come to the mic. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Luna, my son's Ethan, he is in Bullen Park. And this May, he and two of his Bullen Park friends will represent Michigan going to DC Orlando for the National Math Con. We're proud of our math team, we're proud of the math students. So, it doesn't seem like the board shared the honor or the feeling with the parents. And what makes us more furious is, you guys don't care about feedback. No one asked us. We are the victim. Our kids are the victim of this whole impact. It doesn't affect you guys, or maybe even your kids. But our kids, our future, their future, are in danger. So, no service, no feedbacks, no emails, no notifications, nothing. And we don't even come into this meeting hoping to see this in the agenda. No. There are even no place to voice our concerns. So, we don't ask for no reason, like, okay, but, yeah, thank you.
Helen Zhu? Helen Zhu, I believe it's an X-U is the last name? I can't, it's Helen? Zhu, okay. Thank you, followed by Yutha Gouda.
Hi, my name is Helen Zhu, I'm a current Troy resident, have a daughter in middle school. Here, I'm asking the board to reconsider and remove the honor class. I want to address two interesting fact I just realized. The first one, when there's a school asks for funding, there is a lot of email communications, flyer everywhere, and also, right, the teachers, the school send reminders, all of that. However, coming to cancel the honor class, there is no communication, no transparency. I'm wondering what's behind that one? Why start it down in such a secret way? And also, the first is English, then the math, make people wondering, what's the next? Also, last, I want to point out a fact, right, most people come to Troy because of Troy School District, that's attract all the talents here. However, if this continues, right, this will drive the residents out. The next time when you guys ask for funding, they may not get that, get that funding wanted.
Thank you. Yutha Gouda, followed by Mian Mian Huang. Y-U-K-T-H-A is the first name? G, I believe it's a G-O-W-D-A, Gouda?
Yutha Gouda.
Yutha Gouda? Okay. And I have, I believe it's Mian Mian Huang. Last name H-U-A-N-G. Okay, next I have Stephen Sheng.
First, thanks for the committee to invite us here. So we do not need to emphasize this, how important science and math, again, because so many people has already emphasized that. So first, today I came here, I find just the decision, I thought, committee invite us to collect our opinions about this decision, and then make a decision. And then today, after that, I, I realized, the decision has already been made. So it took me aback, right? So then, so we, we need some transparency. So so many members, so many residents already has been mentioned that I do not need to repeat that. And then, we shall not trade out the future of our kids. Kids' future for any political agenda here. And your decision deprives our children's opportunities to thrive for the future. Among those kids, maybe somebody can be next Steve Jobs. Maybe next Elon Musk. You are killing this kind of opportunities.
Thank you. My last person I have here is Weilong, and last name is H-A, and I think it's an O.
Weilong Hao.
Hao, okay, thank you.
Resident in Troy, and also have two kids in the school district. So I'm here as most of the parents to express the deep concern to remove the honors option. I do not see the rationale at all. So, in contrast, actually, I see the rationale to keep it, just to serve all kinds of different students with different background. All right? I understand that. Curriculum reform can score points for some administrators, but I want, hope, I hope as a parent, the people who made the decision, I want you to think about as educators, to serve the students with different education background, different ability, all right? So I also think about-
Fifteen seconds.
So why the teachers at school ask our kids to look forward, but now administrators look backward? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes public communication. That moves us, the last item is other. I'm giving a report, I didn't know I was giving a report. Maybe just a progress report, but most of you have been with me at some point or another. So at this point, we've, we've talked to kids in nine different buildings. We have four more buildings we're gonna talk to tomorrow. We've talked to a total of about 250 kids so far. It's really good conversations that we've been having at, at every grade level. We're still having a meeting. We're having a meeting. If you want to have a me- Sir, if you want to have a meeting, go in the hall. We're having a meeting here, please be respectful. This is our meeting, this is where, okay? You can, if you need to leave, you can leave, but have the meeting someplace else. Okay.
You were respectful of our time though. You didn't put us on the agenda, you limited our time to a minute, so, you know, this is, yeah.
Anyway, um- Wow, really?
I'm here to listen.
Okay, I don't know what I was saying. Let's see, so, so, right. Update, so we have, yeah, so we've got four, we've got four more tomorrow, or three more tomorrow, actually. Three more tomorrow, and the only one that is left is Baker. So we'll hit Baker after the break. Athens is tomorrow, yeah. Baker's the one we won't get tomorrow because they have an assembly. So we couldn't do it. Oh, okay.
We'll be waiting forever, just honestly.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say. Anyway, we're having really good conversations, it's very intriguing. We're seeing very common themes. The, the things that students are asking for are things that are very consistent with the strategic plan. That's really exciting to see. So, you know, I'm, I'm feeling really, really good about the conversation. I think we're gonna be able to build some really interesting components of a graduate. So, excited about that.
Do you want to say your favorite line, what the kids said?
My favorite line, when I ask, it's my 2nd grader, where I said, um, at the beginning, I was asking them about, what do you think a portrait is? You know, a portrait is a picture, right? And I said, okay, so, all, all pictures are, or all portraits are pictures, but not all pictures are portraits. What makes a, a good portrait? And the 2nd grader said, well, I have two things for you. One is that it's a picture of your face, so it looks like you. The other is, if it's a good portrait, it shows the best, the best parts of you.
Picture of the best parts of you.
Picture the best parts of you. And it's like, that's where it's like, okay, you got it, I can, I can't do better than that. I said, that goes on the cover of the report. So, they're able to understand this idea of, you know, what do they want to be known as? What do they want their secret sauce to be? And it's really exciting to see how deeply the kids are tackling that, that question, even at a younger age. So, anyway, so we're excited, making good progress there.
Thanks for involving the elementary kids in that group. The kids are really excited about it, it was fun to see.
Yeah, that was fun. Yeah, well, it's always fun for me, anyway, so, yeah. And it was even at a preschool level, she made me do a preschool class, and I said, oh come on, I can't ask these questions to preschool. But, but the four-year-olds, the thing that struck me about them is that already, they had done some pre-work on it, they had some charts up there, and they kind of talked about what was important to them. But what, what struck me was, as they were, talked about things that they were good at, they said, one of our people, I think it was Marie, said, wow, you're mathematicians and authors, because they were showing the books they made, and they'd been talking to us about, some of them are learning how to cook, and they said, and chefs, you know? And I'm like, okay, well, that's really powerful, that you have, you know, I imagine myself in a career, even at age four, I'm thinking about, you've shown me that I can do this. I can cook in class and that translates into I could do this as a career. And I thought, okay. So that was exciting to see that people are starting to make those career connections, even at, you know, this size. So, that was fun. That, and then when we were walking, we were all as a group, walking in from the main room, we had a couple of kids that were waiting to get ushered in because they were late for class, and this little four-year-old looked at us and said, he goes, looks at all of us, he says, why are there five teachers? When he's looking at us, I said, that means we're doing the right thing. Because I said, he's, first of all, he just counted to five. Secondly, he's going, this is unusual, and then query. Like, it's scientific query, why are you here? What's going on? Something's going on. And I'm like, that's great, if we're encouraging that kind of thinking, then, then we've got some good teaching going on in that building. So that, that was really fun. So that's it, that's my report. So I'll, I'll move to other, other, and bounce through, is there anything that you have?
I guess I'm first one this time.
Yeah, you're up.
Everybody knows it's March, it's reading month, which I've been able to go into a couple of schools and a couple of classrooms and read to the kiddos, which has been great.
Is that fun?
Best part of the job, I feel like.
Yep, it is. Absolutely is.
And my kids don't let me redo them as much anymore. Kind of, you know, selfish in that respect. But I really want to say thank you to the teachers and administrators for putting all that together. There's a lot of themes, activities. There's just a lot that goes into it to make the kids really enthusiastic about reading, so I just want to say thank you to all the administrators.
Okay, great.
I didn't get a chance to go to any classrooms to read this month. I had a lot going on, but I did get a chance to go with Carl for majority of the Portrait of a Graduate.
You've been a trooper.
It is amazing to listen to the kids directly, what they like learning, they enjoy and prefer practical, experiential learnings, like, even in social studies, when they're learning about what happened in history, they want to build something and then learn about it. Or the Vax Museum project, where they learn about something and teach others. Those are the type of things that they seem to remember and learn the most. One thing I've learned from going to the high school class, which was a surprise to me, was, first and foremost, this was a classroom of seniors, and one, one group said, well, I wish I learned, like, economics, how to-
Personal finance.
Personal finance, how to do my own stuff, how to, I mean, do my money management part of it. And in the same classroom, there was another student who said, well, I took that class, that class was there. So, seems like we don't do a great job. We offer a lot, and we don't do such great a job of telling them what is available and what to do. In that same classroom, I heard a student kind of said, say, we learn a lot, and I'm happy we learn a lot, and a lot of things, but we kind of learn because we need to learn, and after the test is done, we don't remember a thing. Almost like this person was saying, I would rather learn things that are important, more in-depth, that I can remember later. And that stuck to me. And these are seniors who have gone through 12 years with us, and who have gone through. So, some of those things resonate with me, and I do want to speak to most of the people who came and talked here. We do not take curriculum changes lightly. We think a lot, we go to classrooms, we listen to them, we watch the teachers teach pilot classes, and we see, and we always ask the questions to the administration, how are the teachers gonna cope with so many different types of students on a lock goes into the decision-making in the end? And I want to make sure everybody that nothing is taken lightly here.
I'm always a big person, big, big picture type of person. So I, I think what strikes me after several of these meetings, but, you know, even tonight, is really the opportunities and supports that, that are given to our students to really, to reach their full potential. So whether it's a student who's really passionate about the spelling bee, working with the administration to make that a reality, that requires a district, and administrators, and an overall tone that if there's a student that is really capable and passionate, we will meet you and support you. So whether it's, you know, something academic, more along the lines of the spelling bee, or creating programming for students, like with the Creative Guild, the district really provides so many opportunities and so many supports for students to really reach their unique potential. So I, I always want people to, to really look at, and I try to look at, at big picture. And then the other thing I do want to say is, is not necessarily school-related, but Ramadan starts on Thursday, it is the month of fasting, and a lot of our students and a lot of our families are gonna be doing that, and it's, it's a challenge when you're trying to attend sports activities and do school. So I just want to, you know, wish a happy Ramadan to all of our families.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mian.
One, one thing that I've noticed in the Troy winter news- One, one thing that I've noticed in the Troy winter newsletter that is a supplement to our, to the, to the local Troy Times, if you've noticed, they're, I'm very proud of the students who are both giving back and taking, taking leadership roles and stepping up. There are numerous examples of students from each school, whether they're collecting toys, singing for seniors, taking collections for those who need help. Barnard has a blood drive, sending letters to the military. These are all important things that our students do that may or may not, that probably don't get recognized unless they're in a publication such as the Troy Times, and, and we supplement that through our newsletter. So, to pay attention to past articles like this is heartening because it tells really another side of what our students are doing that give back to the community in many ways.
Great, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I echo some of the comments from my fellow board members. I have enjoyed March is Reading Month and visiting Portrait of Graduate students. It's always fun to get to talk to the students, and one of the things that I love about doing that is that I always get to tell those students that when we're making these decisions, that I'm picturing their faces, that we're not making any of these decisions looking at spreadsheets, but we're really, I mean, we're thinking about each and every one of these, these individual kiddos. And as someone who went to a very small school that had very limited electives and no honors courses and no AP courses, and someone who still chose to pursue getting a PhD, I know that you can do that without those advantages. However, I am so grateful that my children get to go to a district where they have advantages and electives and opportunities, and I want to continue to think about how we can make sure that we're meeting our kids where we are. We, and as people have said, as I mentioned in our comments earlier, you know, when we first started talking about math, the first thing that the Teaching and Learning Department did was hand me Math for Human Flourishing. Like, what are we doing that's making sure that, that kids have a holistic picture? What are we doing to make sure that we're looking at, at big picture stuff? And so, I'm just really grateful that people are really thoughtful and mindful, and that we're not just leaning on what has been successful in the past, but that we're pushing ourselves to always be better at what we do for the sake of the children. And I want to keep that in our front of mind. I want to say congratulations to Troy High. They did an amazing job with curtains. It's always nice to be able to go and, and laugh and support our students in their passions. I want to say congratulations to the many people who were nominated to be Support Staff Person of the Year. We had some phenomenal candidates, and so, I'm always proud to see all the ways that, that people are grateful for the ways that people have supported them, and I too want to wish our families a meaningful Ramadan season.
Can you guys explain to us how this is going to take place?
Thank you. Sir, sir, this isn't public comment. We're having a meeting.
I want to take the opportunity to thank our staff. We have two different big committees going on that are follow-up to our bond work. So, our furniture pilot with our K-8 folks is taking place, lots of after-school meetings and learning about furniture and space in our, in our buildings. And also, we are looking at playgrounds where kids are able to design and work with our architect team to think about playgrounds in the future for all twelve of our buildings, so we're excited about that. So, more to come on both of those topics, but it's exciting to see that in place. Also, thanks to our parents and to our teachers. We had parent-teacher conferences taking place over the last couple of weeks, and so, we're heading into a well-deserved spring break. So, just a reminder, also, we have April fourth is our next workshop, and followed by the eighteenth is our regular.
Next meeting. Thank you, since I would have those dates on the top of my head.
Thanks to you.
And then, just to build on what, what you've been saying about what we heard, you know, the, the themes that I, that were coming up over and over again is this desire for both collaborative effort and individual effort. Like, the students don't want one or the other, they want opportunities to do both. Choice was big, having enough time to go in depth, get longer deadlines with more time to, you know, to dive in, that's something that they talked about as opposed to short deadlines, because there's a, a sense, a short deadline means I can't go in depth as I go through. Experimentation, anytime there's experiments where I have to figure something out, that's an exciting way to learn. The other thing is, is having applications to real world, being able to understand and connect what I'm doing to what happens or where I might use this on the outside. So, having regular opportunities for, for students to see that. And then the other thing that came up over and over again was glide paths. They didn't use that term, but it's, but it's, I have a long-term, oh, I want to be a doctor, right? I'm in eighth grade right now, I want to be a doctor. I, I hope by the time I leave the Troy system that I know how I'm going to get to that next level. So, making sure that we're providing counseling and guidance in that regard so that kids can start designing those pathways and understanding them. So, it was interesting because over at TCCHS, that was one of the things that the students over there said that TCCHS teachers and staff did better than anybody, and that they came out of our larger high schools and said, I wouldn't have had confidence that I would know this before I came here, but having come here, now I'm confident, you know, down to one, one, one older student actually came and talked to me after the meeting, and she said, this building saved my life. She said, before I came here, I wouldn't be able to talk to anybody, I didn't know, I had no confidence. I didn't believe that I would ever have a happy life, and now I know that I'm capable of having a happy life. So, I thought, there's a good return on investment for, for TCCHS. And she said, this environment, she said, this place is a perfect place if there is such a thing. So, you know, that was, that was a really powerful end to the meetings that day. So, there's a happy note to focus on. There was one other thing I wanted to tell everybody. Whatever, as I've forgotten, and I'm kind of a little bit frazzled. I mean, I, I guess the only thing that I would tell for the community, and I want to build on what you're saying, which is, we look at those beautiful faces in front of us, and everything we do is about making sure that these kids are provided the best opportunities. One of the questions the board has looked at every time that we've looked at leveling up a curriculum, the question is, are, are honor students still going to be challenged? Do we have data that says our honor students are doing the same or better than they were in the old way of doing things? All of our data is showing that the, we're getting superior work out of our honor students in these leveled-up pilot classes. So, we're seeing evidence at the, at the high end that that's working. We're also seeing more kids being lifted higher at the same time. And, and, you know, I go back to our, every time we try to pick winners and losers, what happens is that we're not very good at doing that. And when we look at, at, as we've expanded the number of children who have access to AP courses in this district, twelve years ago, when I came on, we had a very narrow focus of students who were allowed to take AP classes, and we had a very high passing rate on those AP tests. Then we started working on expanding the number of students who were capable of getting there and reducing the barriers for those students to get there. And what we've found is that we've consistently expanded the number of students who are taking AP classes, and our passing rate has not dropped. So, that means in the past, what we've done is we've locked very capable children out of advanced course pathways, and that's not something that we want to be doing. So, the, the changes that we're looking at are focusing on giving a very strong foundation for all of our kids up through about eleventh grade, and then letting them really fly free with lots of new choices and options and AP options for more students in the last two years of high school. So, you know, even down, we're talking about our math levels, we look at our math, we are not going to reduce the, the capability of a student to make it to the highest levels of math under the new program versus what we, what we've had up until the state. So, these are all questions that we do look at, that we do talk about, and that we're focusing on, and we will make adjustments if we're, if we're concerned that we're not achieving those goals. The pilot data would suggest that we're going to achieve those goals for more of our children, which is what we're trying to do. So, that, that's, this is not something that we take lightly, and it isn't something we've been doing in secrecy. We've been doing these in open meetings, we've been exploring these possibilities for the last three years, and we post our agendas, we talk about them. So, so it is something we are, everything we, we do on this board is in the open, it has to be in the open by law. So, so I just want to make sure the community doesn't see this as we're dropping, we're dropping honors. What we're doing is we're re-scoping our coursework, and we really are leveling up. We're seeing that, we're seeing those results. So, we're really excited, and when you go into the leveled-up courses and you see the students in those courses, it's an exciting classroom to be in because the kids are engaged, the kids are excelling, and that's the exciting thing for us.
Do you have a lunch agenda?
Thank you, so we're good. So, we're all set. So, I think we're adjourned, unless I missed something. So, we covered the last two, right, we covered the next two dates?
Yep.
So, we're good. Okay, thank you.